So I'm going to read the roll of the board. And as I read your names, please answer if you are here. Are you ready for that? Sabina Brochu. Kyle Courtois.
Here.
Kim Gleason.
Here, here, sorry, I thought I could unmute from the side.
Kathy Lavoy.
Here.
Bill Mathis.
Here.
John O'Keefe. Paul DeBrosse. Peter Pelz.
Here.
And Daniel Fong.
Here.
Welcome, Dan.
Thank you.
So just a couple of things before we get started. Keep in mind that this is being recorded in all respects. It'll be, it's being video recorded as well as audio. So as a courtesy to the public, please be careful about background noise, moving paper, moving your coffee cup, we can hear all of that. Somebody's moving a lot of paper right now. So if you can get, stop doing that by muting. When you're not talking, please mute. This goes for visitors as well, please. You'll find the microphone bar, or you'll find a bar on the screen. If you simply move your mouse, it will bring up the bar and you'll see image of a mic. You also, this, you can also turn off your video. You'll still be connected, but you can remove your video if you wish. Are there any questions about these things?
Can I just add, John, this is Maureen, that if you're, for the people calling in, it's star six to mute and star six to unmute.
Thank you. So we're continuing to get feedback from, you think it's quiet in your room, but it's all coming up so we can hear it. And please manage that throughout the meeting if you will. We will remind you as we go along.
Can I ask a question, just a procedural question? Is it possible to mute everyone, Maureen? And then people can unmute as they speak? Is that an administrator function or no?
I can, I can mute all, that is my, my one administrative function. So John would have to unmute himself, but I'm happy to do that.
I don't know if that helps, John, just a suggestion.
It is.
And that each of us could unmute as we're intentionally speaking.
I, I think that's fine. Maureen, am I right in understanding that people can unmute at their own pleasure? But that you can mute everybody and then we just, each can come back on as we see fit? Is that right?
Yes, I believe so.
I think that's probably a good plan. After a while, we may have to mute everybody again and start it over, but I think it's a good way to get started. So, Maureen, go ahead and mute us all and then we'll resume. So continuing on, are there any amendments to the agenda? Hearing none. Let's move on to item B in the agenda. We're going to move quickly because we have a witness standing by who has a time limit, but I'm sure we can stay within his limit. Item B, consent agenda. The only item on the consent agenda, as you should know, are the minutes of the last meeting. Is there a motion with regard to the consent agenda?
Hi, this is Jenna. I move that the State Board of Education approves the consent agenda as presented.
Been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you both for handling that so nicely and identify yourself, identifying yourself as you came on board, that's lovely. So it's been moved and seconded that we adopt the agenda, the consent agenda as presented. Is there discussion? Then, and that's going none in all, let's just call the roll, please, Maureen.
Hang on, I had to unmute myself. Okay. Kimberly Gleason.
Yes.
Kathy Lavoy.
Yes.
Bill Mathis.
Hi.
John O'Keefe.
Not here.
Oliver Olson. Oliver. Peter, star six to unmute. Jenna O'Farrell. That's all unless Peter's back on, so.
And the chair votes yes.
And I'm not sure, it, I was just going to say, it looks as though Sabina's on, just on the participants list. So I don't, I don't know if she is, but.
Sabina Brochu, are you there?
I'm here.
All right, thank you. So you have approved the consent agenda as presented. Are there any announcements? Are there any students who wish to make a report?
Um, I don't think, I think, there's nothing really specific that I have to say. I mean, it's been, it's been a challenge, but everything has been a challenge with the new circumstances. So online school, of course, is, it's slightly similar platform to this, actually. We meet with our teachers, so the whole class. Teachers give us a rundown of the assignments that they've designed and then we go and work on that.
It, it must be quite hard to feel like you're moving forward.
Yes, it's challenging. I mean, of course, in a classroom setting, it's much easier because your peers are there with you, so you're in a focused environment. Whereas, you know, here at home, you're not surrounded by other people. So it's, it's challenging to find the self motivation to sit down and focus an hour and a half on the work, even if it's not your favorite thing to do.
Interesting. Kyle, do you have anything you'd like to tell us about?
Basically, just what Sabina said, it's just, it's, it's weird to be home while still doing schoolwork. Like, it's, it's an odd dynamic of, it's like, yeah, you're still in school, but you spend every day in your house. So it, it's a bit odd to be home so much, but yeah, it's just what we have to deal with right now, I guess.
Yes, yes. It's, it's strange for a lot of people.
Yeah.
All right, good, thank you. Yeah, are there any other things that board members would like to speak about or announce? Students or otherwise? Okay. Hearing none, let's move to.
I guess, John, I'm sorry, I'm slow on the mute button. I just want to express tremendous gratitude in seeing education at work as, working so hard to do the best they can for the most at all levels, whether it's in our local communities or our AOE working through support with guidance and modifying guidance as necessary. It seems to be a collective effort, like maybe none other, in the hopes of addressing some of the things that are more glaring right now than ever, probably are the inequities around the capacity, whether it be internet or otherwise, for our students in their environment and in their learning. So I just, I, I say a heartfelt thank you to everyone because this is hard.
This is Jenna. I just would like to echo what Kim said. It's a huge lift for schools to do work that they're not equipped to do at all. Specifically, schools rising to the childcare expectations, they're, they're not really set up to be childcare. And they've done an amazing job here in the Northeast Kingdom, supporting families of essential workers and the food distribution efforts from the schools in the Northeast Kingdom have been absolutely amazing, responsive to families and have really gone above and beyond to make sure that everyone and every student and their families are, are well nourished in the Northeast Kingdom. And as Kim said, teachers have gone to extraordinary means to connect with their students. And broadband in the Northeast Kingdom has been a major issue and really highlighting equity access has been a huge, a huge problem here. So moving forward, we have some good data around where we don't have broadband and how that impacts children and their learning during this time, for sure. So, thank you, thank you, thank you, everyone.
Yeah, and families as well, and students keeping their knees soft and going with the flow because none of us really have choices right now, but families are also coming together in Herculean ways to do things that they've relied on experienced educators to do. So it's teamwork and I'm really grateful. Thanks to all.
Thank you both for those comments. I'd like now to turn to item C in our agenda. I'd like to tee this up a little bit for all of you. Back in July of 2019, it was brought to the attention of the State Board that a school in the Battle Bar area had encountered some really acute financial difficulties, was behind in some of its payroll obligations and other really fundamental expense obligations. And that was brought to the board's attention and we received a briefing on the elements of the situation in connection with a school called the Inspire School for Autism in Battle Bar. And at the time, in, in May, July of 2019, the board invoked a provision of statutes wherein the board found, made of finding, based on the evidence presented to it, that the school in question no longer had the financial capacity required to conduct its, pursue its purposes. That's a term of art in the statute. And it's, it's a fairly important notion because the schools in question are schools that receive public monies in tuition. And so the state has a legitimate fiduciary interest and obligation to ensure that when it's paying money for services, it's receiving comparable value. And any school that might be in financial difficulty, that raises questions as to whether or not it's able to discharge its obligations to its clients, especially publicly financed clients. So for those reasons, that General Assembly asked the State Board to monitor what's called the financial capacity of approved independent schools. And whenever there is a concern, to declare that, so that everybody is on notice that there's a concern about the financial capacity of the school. So that's, that's what happened in July of 2019 in connection with the Inspire School. We asked them to visit with us and present a status information and the next meeting they did that. And since then, the Inspire School has been very conscientious about keeping us informed about what they're doing to correct the root causes of the financial difficulties they were in and what they're doing to dig themselves out from the debt and accounts payable that had accumulated over time. If I recall correctly, the Board of Directors of the Inspire School stepped up and made very significant cash available to the school to bridge it through this troubled time. So we've had very, very good cooperation from the school, from the board, keeping us briefed. You've been briefed, I think the last time you all were briefed was in September. We've received written updates since then, which I, which I review. And I've invited today the Chair of the Board, Mark Anderson, to come speak and to tell you of the progress that's been made, so that I think we may be in a position to put this matter to rest. So without any questions from you at the moment, let's hear from Mark Anderson, who has furnished to us all a written summary of the condition of the school.
Whoops, I think I was unmuted, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, State Board. I'm happy to answer any questions. I mainly would like to say what's ultimately been written in the statement that we provided, which is that we are in much better shape than in July. At this point, we have settled all of our long-term debt. We no longer owe any money to the IRS, we've paid all of that off. We built a budget based on having low enrollment and we had the opposite occur. So with increased student count, we were able to really work towards paying off debt earlier than we had originally anticipated. We've hired a permanent director as well as relied on various professionals, attorneys, as well as our CPA to help develop plans going forward. To date, we are in a very strong position. Most of our schools, I don't think we can talk about anything in current days without talking about COVID-19. So most of our school districts that we've been working with have continued to support us financially, the, which has allowed us to continue delivering education to our children. We also were able to apply to and receive funding from the Payment Protection Program from the federal government, which has also provided us a very good buffer to protect us in operating into the unknown future.
Thank you, Mark. I, I think this is a, a really excellent story in the sense that the school suffered some internal mismanagement issues that were not apparent to the Board of Directors until a lot of funds had been diverted. The Board of Directors responded really proactively and very responsibly, not only with funds, but also making difficult decisions about getting the school back on its feet. And I want to commend you, Mark, and I hope you'll relay to your board our gratitude that you've brought this school back to financial strength again. Are there any questions for the, for Mark Anderson from the board? Hearing none, I would like to ask a board member to offer the motion that I have prepared. It seems to me, since we declared that the school did not have financial capacity and they have now done everything we've asked them to do, we have, I believe, a moral obligation to the school to declare that that concern no longer exists. We're not able to declare that the school has financial capacity, but we certainly must withdraw, I think, our alert to the community that it did not have financial capacity. We have not done an audit, so we cannot affirmatively declare that it has financial capacity, but we can certainly say that all the information that we've given satisfies us that whatever financial capacity issues existed in the past have been resolved. So that's what the motion that I have given to you indicates. Is there somebody who would be willing to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Please? Please, please speak the motion.
Kathy, did you want to do that or do you want me to do that?
Yep. No, I went back to mute, so I apologize.
All right.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Kathy.
I move that the State Board acknowledges the corrective actions undertaken by the Inspire School for Autism to address the board's 19 July 2019 finding that the school lacks financial capacity to meet its stated objectives and that the school has restored funds, balances, and kept the board informed of its financial situation and that the State Board finds that the Inspire School for Autism no longer appears to lack the financial capacity to meet, to meet its stated objectives.
You've heard the motion, is there a second?
I'll second that, Kim Gleason.
Thank you, Kim. It's been moved and seconded that the board move, as you just heard, to acknowledge that the Inspire School has had difficulties, has recovered from those difficulties, and that the board is satisfied that the school's financial situation has been well restored. Is there further discussion? Then we'll take the roll call, please.
John, I'm going to read everyone's name in case people join the meeting late, so. Jenna O'Farrell.
Yes, sorry.
Star six to unmute, Peter. Oliver Olson.
Did you get that? Am I on?
Oh, is that Peter? Yay or nay?
Yes. Yeah, yes.
Thank you. Oliver Olson. John O'Keefe. Bill, star six to unmute.
Yes.
Thank you. Kathy Lavoy.
Yes.
Kim Gleason.
Yes.
Kyle Courtois. Jenna O'Farrell, you voting?
And the chair votes yes. You have, you have voted on the motion and I thank you for that. Mr. Anderson, we thank you and we please convey to you our, our respect and appreciation for what you folks have pulled off in the last nine months.
I will do that and I would like to just say on behalf of the school, we appreciate the, the oversight that's been provided from the State Board. This process helped us work through some of the problems and ensure that we're on a good direction. So thank you again for your help and your support. And to the students, I really truly appreciate what you guys are going through right now and just want to encourage you guys to keep at it and I hope all is well for you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Anderson. Very good. We'll move on to item D, which is the chair's report. I'll be fairly, fairly brief. I would say, just clarify that we did get a letter out to the Southwestern Vermont Supervisor Union and to the Baton, Baton Hill Valley Supervisor Union, both to the chairs and the superintendents of those town, town districts and union districts, notifying them of the board's concern and clarifying for them that the board has no intention of further extending the deadline for their action to bring Baton Hill Valley, to integrate Baton Hill Valley with Southwestern Vermont. That, I think, went out only today or yesterday. It was drafted after some delay. It was drafted by Oliver and with assistance from Don Arusso Savage. And, but they, they've all received an email as of today to this effect. So it's too early to know what, if any, response we might hear from them. I've sent to you today a copy of my testimony presented yesterday to the House Committee on Education. And I suspect that we, we have on the agenda a time to talk about Act 173, which is item H on our agenda, and I would suggest that we can, I can go into greater detail about the conversation with the House Committee at that time. Other than that, I would say that this has been obviously a difficult and confusing time for all of us, including the State Board. It's been, obviously, we've suffered our share of frustrations, as are the students and parents and others. One in particular is that on the very day that the Senate was prepared to vote in, and I'm pretty confident, in the affirmative for our bill to separate the State Board and the Agency of Education and to create greater autonomy for the board, on that very day was the day that the Senate decided it had to shut itself down. So, and I had gone up to the State House, even put on a suit and I found one somewhere in the closet. I found, I found in the old suit a, a wedding program from eight years ago. So it tells you how often I wear a suit these days. And, and it was a, a sat on the, on the Senate floor, being among old friends and colleagues, and was all excited to hear this discussion and see the vote for our bill, which we worked on so hard in January and February, and it all came to naught. And I think it's pretty likely that the bill, along with a couple hundred other bills, will die this session. It's, there's talk about going back in August, but my guess is the appetite for that will maybe be pretty thin by the time the time comes. So that, that I personally have found very frustrating and Kim and Peter had worked on that with me a great deal also. And, but we'll just go back and do it again next year and we'll know better how to do it next year. So that's all I have at this time and I'd be happy now to invite the secretary to give his report. Dan, are you with us?
Yes, good afternoon. It's good to see you all. I certainly, I can give you an update on essentially where we're at with COVID-19, design of our educational system, essentially, and then have, have time for questions, if you have some. I'd say, you know, basically, from a Metis perspective, we've been going through a series of transitions in navigating the crisis, as you know. Initially, with the emergency order, shutting down schools, and we entered into a disposition, essentially, of trying to maintain academic progress of students. And once the announcement was made, the school would be closed for in-person instruction for an extended period, if not the rest of the school year. We transitioned to what we call continuity of learning, which is the, the expectation that the schools would more or less try to continue educating students as if they educating students as if they were doing in-person instruction. Districts made that transition as of April 13th, from a requirement standpoint, and they are required to submit continuity of learning plans to us at the agency. So we worked hard to develop a template for those plans to address some core elements, and districts are well in the process of doing that. As part of that sort of, I was talking about this larger sort of ebb and flow transition, had the decision about how to handle April vacations. So continuity of learning timeframe was April 13, but that's precisely when half of our districts were to begin their April vacation. And then this week, the other half of the schools are in April vacation. So a decision was made to maintain the school calendars with the April vacations, essentially to preserve flexibility in June, because teachers are only contracted to teach a finite number of days each year, and we didn't want to work through April vacation with a goal of ending the school year early if the public health condition were to change and such that June might be more advantageous for us to try to resurrect in-person instruction. So that was sort of a key sort of benchmark. But other than that, we've, we've entered into a certain amount of stability in terms of reacting to emergency orders, if you will. That, that context has been relatively stable compared to what it was in the first couple of weeks of the crisis. A key milestone that's on the horizon now is May 8th and May 15th. May 15th, as you know, the Governor extended the stay home, stay safe order to May 15th, but he's asked me to maintain the May 8th deadline, which was a deadline established earlier on for me to produce guidance relative to end-of-year celebrations, including graduations. So that's something we'll be working on next week in particular, as we'll be looking into our public health data and relying on our public health officials to give us a good projection about what the rest of the school year looks like from a public health standpoint. And then we'll be producing guidance on or before May 8th relative to end-of-year celebrations and graduations. The big part of what I've been focused on, it's not so much part of the ebb and flow, what's going on instructionally, but in terms of, from a policy perspective, I think in the last maybe seven days or so, really when the revenue forecast came out at the state level, identifying the shortfall in the Ed Fund. The better part of what I've been working on are the financial implications of the COVID-19 emergency. So you might be aware, there's a significant deficit in the Ed Fund in fiscal year '20. We've been working closely with our federal delegation and the U.S. Department of Education to understand the CARES Act revenues that are about to come down. Actually, I think my understanding is tomorrow we'll get some more guidance on that. But we're still lacking this specific guidance on how those funds will be delivered and when. But we should have that guidance within a matter of seven days or so. But the point I'd make is altogether, the financial context is pretty serious. I'd suggest the State College conversation is representative of that. But we have, we have a significant issue relative to the financing of our public education system as well. The total CARES Act revenues are approximately $30 million. That'll come to the state of Vermont. And our best-case scenario right now is that the Ed Fund will have a shortfall of $90 million. So even if all the CARES Act money could be applied somehow to the Ed Fund, we'd still be short $60 million or so. So we are starting, I think, you know, with, with policymakers to, to understand the magnitude, the challenges in front of us. And we'll be working closely with legislative leaders and folks to kind of start to identify some solutions. But I think the financial implications of the crisis aren't necessarily well-understood down to the level of the classroom. So I think we're, we're working hard to sort of make everyone aware of what's, what's at stake and what the issues are. But this will be, I think, next in a series of challenges for us as an education system to, to bring our best thinking to the table to try to resolve these issues. I guess I'd end there for now. I'm happy to talk about, there's so many other, other aspects of this work that might, you might find interesting or have questions about, but that's kind of where we are at the moment.
There's some, can you hear me?
Yes, Bill, how are you?
The question is, is that question of where does the $60 million shortfall come from? And how in the world can we cover that with contracts are set, budgets are set? There's some small economies that are seen. And then for the next year, it's going to be a great deal worse from what it appears right now. And what in the world are we going to do?
Yeah, I mean, that's essentially what we're trying to, firstly, just understand the magnitude of the problem. And I should say, you know, to a certain extent, you know, it's been comforting just to be able to identify some of the issues. But one area I think we all acknowledge that is still unknown to us is the cost of remediation services, the compensatory education services, basically the cost of the effects of this crisis on students and their families. So that's, that's still relative unknown, as much as we're starting to identify the patterns of other aspects of the puzzle. Yeah, so we have, we have some challenges in front of us. So I guess the good news is we're not alone, like other states are facing similar issues.
This is Peter. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
As you well know, Dan, there's also serious issues about spending constraints at the local level as well. And, you know, the, I guess, this is sort of, you know, is there opportunity? Is this, is there a silver lining or anything that you can see that, that, that has to be done? As you mentioned, that a State College is, that was a bold, bold proposition from Jeb, but it, it was, you know, it was, you know, it had to happen. And are you seeing any kind of pressure like that? And how do we, you know, is there an idea how we're going to handle this in terms of being, you know, perhaps less reactive and with more of a concerted effort to really look at changing how we provide public education in the state?
Yeah, I think it's, it's early in that regard. I should have mentioned the task force to sit up a little higher, sort of strategically, to consider those issues. That task force met for the first time last Friday. And they'll be meeting, I think, through the summer and produce some recommendations on sort of the, what are the strategic opportunities available to us as a state as we try to address some of these significant challenges. But there are, I think, you know, we've been trying to parse the issue down just initially, but once again, it's been really hard just to wrap our arms around and define it around what are the near-term fiscal issues, meaning fiscal year '20 right now? And what are the fiscal year '21 and '22 issues? So that dichotomy is held up to a certain extent in our thinking. So right now, arguably and appropriately, appropriately, our energies have been focused on the fiscal year '20 situation. And I think, as you know, the legislature usually addresses issues of the yield value and the tax rates in, in this time of year anyway. So I think all of that's coming to a head in the next two weeks. So we'll be, you know, actively working on those issues in partnership with them. But I think right now, we're, what I hear consistently from a lot of educators, not just in Vermont, that, you know, this crisis will have a profound impact on many aspects of our society, including the K-12 education system. I'm not sure yet what we know what those impacts will be. But I think folks are aware of the significance of this historic moment, and that the implications are, of a magnitude is not something we've ever experienced before.
Hi, Dan, this is Jenna. I, I think in the Kingdom, we've experienced when we have systems and structures in place that are solid and work. Those were highlighted by this crisis. They were able to really respond quickly and highlight this, highlight areas that were strong. So I'm, and then systems that didn't work at all clearly aren't going to work now. So I'm wondering, from the AOE's perspective during this time, has there been any kind of spotlight on a system or structure that really works well for public education in Vermont? And then something that's been able to stand out as a success that you want to build off of?
Yeah, it's a great point. I mean, particularly with the use of technology, I think we find often in education, the technology shines a light on things that already always existed. So issues of lack of opportunity or equal opportunity are more easy for us to understand and see through technology. They've always been there. Technology doesn't necessarily create those issues. It just brings more visibility to them. But I think, you know, just in a broader way, the issues of teaching online, I think, you know, we're, one of the efforts that we're doing is, you might be aware, we have an entity called the Vermont Virtual Learning Cooperative, which is essentially our Vermont online high school. And that's, as the name implies, as a cooperative, districts have purchased seats and that have trained their teachers and so forth on essentially a voluntary basis. But we're going to be using some grant funding to more broadly deploy that as a statewide asset. So for those high schools in particular, students in grade seven through 12 that want to offer courses online, and I say courses, meaning the, this sort of paradigm of instruction called a course, for those districts and schools that want to do that, they're going to have some infrastructure established by the state to do that. I think, you know, the, the elementary education is another thing altogether. So there's, there's no clear patterns of, in my view, good technology use necessarily at those grades as there is at the high school level, because we don't organize instruction around this thing called a course necessarily at the elementary level. But I would, the second thing is, so I think, you know, adding on to our high school teaching capability is an important, hopefully, an outcome, because I think, you know, particularly if so many of our small high schools aren't able to offer the full breadth of coursework that some of their larger high schools can do. So hopefully, that'll be an area where we expand out. But I think the other area that we were working on is how to, how to sort of collectively harness the ability of all Vermont teachers to work together and collaborate more effectively. And that, that's a similar, a parallel kind of thinking around ensuring that all students have high-quality instructional materials, curriculum development. Those activities often happen in isolation in Vermont on a district-by-district basis. So once again, using technology, we're considering, you know, how to, how to build an ecosystem essentially where Vermont teachers can collaborate and design curriculum and share best practices more fluidly. We've seen some really innovative approaches, and certainly out of the mother of necessity in this, in this tragedy, or this emergency. But those things, if they are promising practices that could survive this crisis, they should be able to be scaled more readily. So I hear, and we're in the process of collecting stories essentially from districts of cool things they're doing, successful approaches they're doing. I think if we had a better ecosystem for sharing those things, we'd be well-served, particularly as a rural state, where folks that work in the more rural communities don't necessarily have the opportunities for collaboration that exist in the larger school districts.
Other questions for Dan?
Dan, maybe this has been readdressed, but I understood the guidance for pre-K to have the continuity of learning be the responsibility of the public. And that challenge for those preschool, school-age students. So I've listened to some of the testimony, and I apologize if I'm not up to date on where that stands. But the challenge is that the money is going out to those who are, are actually experienced and qualified to be connecting with their families. And we don't either have the resources or the experience in our public K-12s. So I just didn't know if you readdressed that yet.
Yeah, it's, it's been a challenge, one of the more challenging areas to write guidance on. I mean, the flow of information, particularly initially in the crisis, was emergency order and then guidance from the Secretary, and those things were happening fairly rapidly. I think one of you mentioned, or maybe it was one of the students, at the beginning of this crisis, one of the more challenging moments was when we were trying to have the school system take on childcare for essential workers. And we were in this transition where we knew it was likely we were going to see more restrictive social distancing measures, which ultimately became the stay-home, stay-safe order. And we knew that implementation would, would sort of adversely impact the policy we were also trying to design, meaning as much as we were asking public schools to stand up childcare, we knew that once the more restrictive social distancing measures were employed, there would be very little interest for those services. Many people would prefer and would be required to work from home and keep their students with them at home. And likewise, we're sort of on the other end of that now, where we're anticipating opening things back up. You know, as the Governor would say, slowly turning this spigot back open. So we have, we have a couple areas that are sort of in conflict with each other, and we're trying to reconcile them. On the one issue, we have what I term an economic stability policy of ensuring districts are fulfilling their obligation to their employees. So the districts are ordered to pay their employees, regardless of whether they're working their scheduled hours or performing even services that they normally would perform. Districts are required to maintain their payroll essentially, once again, out of an economic stability approach. Similarly, we're asking districts, and we're actually requiring districts to maintain their Act 166 tuition payments to pre-K providers. So these are basically $3,000, $3,200, somewhere in that ballpark ahead, that districts contract with private providers for 10 hours of pre-K instruction. So districts are required to maintain those payments, even though private pre-K providers are ordered to be shut down right now. So other, to the, only to the extent that they're providing daycare or services for essential workers, other than that, they're shut down. So the first part of this tension is the assumption that firstly, these providers survive on the amount of those 166 tuition payments, which they don't. It doesn't begin to cover their costs. But secondly, the assumption is that they're available to provide the service. I would agree, they would be the best people to provide the service, but they are essentially ordered to be shut down, so they're not in position to provide the service. So the way we sort of threaded that needle was to ask Publix to step in, but not step in in a way that's required under Act 166. So we're not asking Publix to provide pre-K instruction 10 hours a week. We're asking them essentially to provide emotional and social support to their earliest partners in our community. And we want to leave them with a certain amount of flexibility to figure out what that means. We're certainly available to support them, and we'll provide further guidance. But as you know, our pre-K landscape is very diverse. So in some communities, that guidance can be very difficult to understand and figure out, because if you essentially provided pre-K through your public system and had very few private providers in your community, be like, well, it's no problem. That's what we do anyway. And communities where it's the exact opposite, where there's a large reliance on the private system, they're like, well, how do we begin to do this, you know? So we're trying to support people to navigate both ends of that spectrum. But once again, the requirement is to pay the 166 tuition amounts, which don't begin to compensate to provide private providers for their work. That's just an economic stability measure. But it's also important to acknowledge that the private providers are not operating right now. So they're not available to do what we'd like them to do. They're essentially been ordered to shut down along with most businesses in Vermont. So we're trying to walk that fine line and see how it evolves. But I think it is fair to say that will continue to evolve, particularly as we contemplate, you know, opening the spigot, so to speak. And we know there's a direct relationship in so many aspects of our economy with the school system. So it's very difficult to contemplate opening businesses without thinking about the childcare needs of parents, and also to what extent school would be open to, to serve its purpose as well. So these are challenging transition moments in our policy and guidance. But one can expect it to continue to evolve.
No, I appreciate that and recognize that while the private providers are ordered to be shut down, our schools are also shut down, and the emotional connection pieces.
Yeah, we don't, we don't qualify them the same way, though, because schools are shut down for in-person instruction. So they're, they're online other than that. So there's a, there's a significant difference between the two dispositions. I didn't mean to cut you off there, but.
No, that's okay.
Private providers are not shut down for in-person instruction. They are shut down unless they're providing in-person services for essential, children of essential people, so that the two are not comparable, in our view.
Yeah, I just, I guess, I appreciate that you're going to continue to look at it, because there's not the expertise or the people power probably in districts where you have relied heavily on private partners, nor is there the capacity to build the relationships that are at those ages with families and kids. So perhaps there's some virtual platform that maintains that, and it can be provided at the state level. Or I'm sure you've heard the testimony too, and I think you know the private providers aren't looking to have Publix do this.
Right, we're aware of that, it's not a, you know, it's an imperfect situation, for sure. But we did, we did consider the issue of, you know, sort of the developmental appropriateness, if you will, of remote learning for pre-K students, and we don't think there's much validity to that. So, you know, that's sort of also feeding into the idea that let's focus on emotional and social support for those students as opposed to academic, you know, learning. And that's, that's, that was an important aspect of our guidance, was to sort of take some of the pressure off. And I, and I didn't make much progress with that unfortunately in my testimony, you know, that we're not asking districts to do what was going on before, we're asking them to sort of do a baseline social-emotional support. And the point I made also, which I think is useful, we are in transition, but this is also in the typical time of year, this is exactly the time of year when we're making those transitions in terms of kindergarten readiness surveys and, you know, the screenings that go on in districts. So, it's in that same sort of space that we want districts to do, reach out and post things on their website, offer connections to other state agencies and so forth. We just don't want to lose kids and families in the landscape right now, and we're, you know, we're concerned about that very issue, just in pre-K, but, you know, we're, we're working with districts closely on issues, I'll say truancy per se, but lack of engagement with this sort of, you know, as we heard our student representatives talk about, it's, it can be challenging for even motivating students to, you know, stay on track during this time, and you can imagine how difficult it is for some families and students who don't necessarily have those supports. So, it's important that we try to do everything we can essentially, and that's the spirit of this guidance, is to try to do everything we can to maintain contact with these families and students.
I do have a question. I don't know what those technological term for it, for middle schools, like fifth grade through eighth grade. I have a younger sister who is that age, and I definitely notice a difference in that I feel like there's more structure to what I'm doing than what I see for schools. I don't know, are there any guidelines that you guys are giving to that grade level, so that way those, all the schools can kind of have something to, you know, go off for that younger age group?
Yeah, we haven't provided direct guidance on that, but I think it's a very astute observation on your part. I mean, if you think about your middle-level experience, so much of our research on middle-level education points to the importance of the socialization of those students and, you know, working in teams and so forth. And, you know, those, those things can be achieved in technology, but it's certainly harder. And I would say to the point where we haven't seen a broader pattern yet necessarily that would warrant more detailed guidance from us, I think some districts are figuring it out better than others. Particularly, you know, and as you might remember Sabina, we have a lot of K through eight schools in the state, so it's not unusual for them to tackle that issue as part of just a general approach, K through eight. And I think in, it's, in other places, it could be significantly more challenging, but it's, it's very uneven around the state right now in terms of infrastructure and approaches. But we are, when I was talking about the point about addressing this issue of teachers being able to collaborate across, you know, the state a little better, we're looking at a couple solutions that would achieve that, but also put some basic infrastructure in place around K through five instruction, because I think that's where, you know, there are some solutions out there. They sort of have to be light in terms of, we call learning management. The learning management, once again, at the high school, is organized around the course as the prevailing paradigm. And the elementary solutions tend to be a little lighter on that, and they use the class as the essential organization, because if you remember your elementary school experience, you might have one classroom teacher teaching all of your subjects, and it's more of a social construct. So, those systems are out there from a technology standpoint, but they're, it's, it's something we're pursuing, it's just not as quite clear how to help us to do that in our, in our context in Vermont. But it's something we're actively looking at.
Yeah, I think my biggest worry is that just making sure that these students that are in that middle and they don't have the content base, they're not, you know, getting behind and getting the short end of the stick when it comes to content-wise, because it's just like saying, like, we want, you know, these teachers to encourage kids to learn something new, like, just kind of keeping them involved, because what I feel like could start to happen is that this just turns into an extended summer break, and we're just starting summer vacation earlier for a lot of these kids, and they're not continuing to get the mind stimulation that's, like, so vital to young children. And so, I don't, I don't know if that's something you guys looked at, or if it's something that should be looked at, because I think that is my biggest worry, that already with summer vacation, kids come back and teachers see a decrease in the students' knowledge. And so, I think we need to make sure that we're not extending that for these, that we're just adding two, three more months onto this deprivation that these kids are having.
Yeah, no, it's a good point. And it's, we, it's, I think it's too early, the big unknown here is what the impact of this crisis will be on those very issues. And I think I'm certainly encouraging, when I talk to superintendents, in terms of where we're going to need to focus our resources, I think it's largely on this unknown issue. It's, we're managing variations in our budgets now and provisioning technology or deploying online learning. There's ups and downs in our financial situation right now relative to that, but I think the big unknown for all districts will be how to reengage with these students, how to remediate for any loss in learning that has occurred, and how to provide the necessary supports for our most vulnerable students. So, I think that's going to be the big unknown. I think if there's any comfort in that, again, I think we're not alone, all states will be in that position, but I think it's prudent for us to plan for that eventuality. Challenge, of course, now is we don't know what that eventuality will look like, you know, we don't know to what extent, you know, what school will look like for the rest of the school year, but we don't know what the fall will look like either, you know? So, we've got to, got to be preparing for those eventualities.
Kathy LaVoy here, Dan, hello.
Hi, Kathy.
Hi, just a couple of comments, you know, I, to Sabrina's point, I have two granddaughters, one in fifth, one in ninth, in the same school district. And, you know, the differences in how they're both responding as individuals, but also in their, their direction and ease with which their teachers are instructing is considerably different. So, looking at the big-picture stuff, I think back to, you know, we assume that younger people know a lot more about the technology, right, and social media and all of that stuff, but we know that that is different than instruction through, through media. And I, I wonder, not only in the state of Vermont primarily, but across the nation, what differences might have to come within our teaching colleges, so that everybody coming out has the ability to be teaching, even if suddenly, through, through technology? And whether or not that might be a bigger discussion across the nation with our secretaries of education in colleges?
Yeah, I think it's a great point, I think it absolutely should be. It's, you know, I spent two years in higher ed myself, I was in a, my program was preparing principals, but even to, to admire our curriculum then, which was largely driven by state standards, you know, there was very little content on managing these systems, or even from a, from a principal standpoint, not necessarily how to teach online, but how to manage them and deploy those systems, how to use those systems to build collaboration and so forth. So, you know, that's, that's a great, great observation, and one for us to think about, particularly at the state board level, because we have some oversight of those, you know, where we can make, make some impact on how teachers should be prepared. I've heard from more than one teacher that they've learned more about teaching online in the last three weeks than they have in three years, so it's...
Yeah.
Unfortunately, a crash course for a lot of them. But yeah, it's a great point, and there are, as much as platforms come and go, there are, there's a discreet body of knowledge on how to teach online, so we have that expertise, and it's one of our reasons we decided to span, expand out on the Vermont Virtual Learning Cooperative, because that not only brings access to a certain amount of infrastructure in terms of a learning management system, it also brings a focus on best practice pedagogy on teaching online. They've spent a lot of time developing those programs to train Vermont teachers on how to teach online. So, we, we see that as a win-win for not only extending the platform, but also disseminating best practice of how to teach online, you know, because there's, there's some discreet things teachers can learn about how to do that.
Absolutely. Secondly, it goes back to your conversation about the deficit for the education fund, and, you know, I think you said something like, and, you know, people know that, I think that whether they do or don't, we, a lot of people forget how the education fund is put together, what makes it up, how come, when it's short, what it, you know, what in our economy is doing that to us? And at this time, most people, especially parents that have children in schools, all they're going to think about is how well they feel their child was educated over these next few months, and, and that's all they're going to remember, they're not going to remember that the deficit came to be because of this. So, I don't know what the governor and, and you as secretary are considering for the communication of that to the general public, but I personally think it needs to be very strategic and, and meant as a reminder of how the Ed Fund is made up, and how come we're seeing a significant deficit, and, and so that people aren't just correlating it to how well their kid was or wasn't they feel educated during this time.
Yeah, it's a great point.
Other, this has been a great discussion. Other members have questions or comments for Dan?
This is Jenna, I just, in kind of final thought here around, you know, when we have uneven implementation across our, our schools in our district, which we've talked about before, the situation highlights that in, in many ways. And I think as we think about what does technology instruction look like for all of our teachers moving forward, I am AOE, I mean, Dan, you talked about literacy instruction and assessment with some consistency and fidelity, I would encourage us to now more than ever think about what social-emotional learning looks like in our schools across the state of Vermont, and how our teachers are supported to support our most vulnerable students as they return to their classrooms, and what training and materials that teachers have in their toolbox that they're able to utilize in the classroom, because kids are going to be coming back in, in probably, you know, different forms that they left in. So, just being able to proactively plan to support them. And I'm sure, Dana, it's not a surprise that you're hearing me say this.
No, I, I just, I was talking with Sabina's question, I just, you know, I immediately go to a fiscal answer on that, because I think, you know, once again, it's, we don't know what the cost of this crisis will be, and I expect it's in this very area that we will need to harness resources to support students in the transition back to whatever the new normal's going to be. So, there's, there's, I wouldn't say a temptation to use the federal money to resolve, you know, temporary things, but this, this one is, this is going to be a big part of our activity in the coming months, and we need to prepare to bring those resources to bear pretty quickly. So, I think that's, that's my, I hate to come back to the financial message on it, but that's, that's where my, my two senses in relative to speaking with other leaders is that we need to prepare for that. And that's certainly at the agency, we're preparing for that as well. We expect student supports to be a major focus of our work, as much as we're talking about technology and how to teach courses online, I think we're, you know, once, once we turn on the lights, so to speak, and figure out what's going on here, we're gonna, we're gonna have to be prepared to rapidly ramp up our supports for our most vulnerable students pretty quickly.
I wonder if one thing that we all might noodle on over the next month or two is, is there a role for the board to play in, in helping to convene conversations that try to look out five years as to how should the world be different in five years based on what we've, where we failed and frankly, where we've succeeded, what we've proven that we do know how to do in limited amounts? And, and how, how, if at all, I can't, I don't think we can presume anything, how if at all, in a steady-state condition five years from now, education ought to look different, be more hardened, if you will, hardened in the sense of system hardness, resilient. One of the, one of the things that occurs to me about this is that with every kind of major shift in how and what we do, take for example, proficiency-based learning, if you will, take for example, getting ready for Act 173, there's a huge variation across the state on the ability or readiness of our educational institutions, our schools and their communities, to be able to get up to speed on any major phenomenon or, or challenge like PBL and, and like census-based funding and practice. And so, one of the questions gets to be is, is, you know, we have some school districts that consistently do it well, they're up to speed, they're ahead of the curve, and then there are some school districts that consistently struggle to catch up, and then there's wide variety in the middle. And one of the things that we might think about is how do we go about creating more homogeneity, more statewide readiness, addressing, addressing our inability to get ready in some places, and learning, and looking at best practices in others? So, this, this, it's a, it's a persistent challenge for us, is that we do it really well in some corners of the state, and we really struggle in many other corners. And when, so when you look at the average overall picture, we're not doing as well as we know we're capable of doing, because we prove it in some districts and some schools and communities. So, maybe one of the, one of the things that I'd like the board to think about is, can you visualize convening a day-long meeting where we bring in people who are doing some blue-sky thinking based on this experience? And, you know, Dan, I'm sure you have access with your own blue-sky thinking, but also you encounter people with backgrounds and knowledge that might help us sort of move on to becoming different and better than we are now today. It's hard to, would be hard, I think, to, to feel good about all this if we come out of it and nothing has changed in the way we do things. We haven't learned anything, we haven't leveraged this experience in any profound way. And I'm sure a lot of people are having thoughts about what this might look like. I'm asking you, board members, to think about, might we convene a day-long session or a couple half-day sessions in which we just invite thoughtful people to come in and lay out their blue-sky ideas about how to do it better the next time, as it were? Dan, I'm seeing you're nodding, do you think something like that might be useful?
Yeah, absolutely, I think, as I mentioned, we're, we have a task force initially launched, but they're going to have a finite window of time, really just to, their focus is to, and there, there's business leaders, higher ed people on that, just to surface the strategic inflammation, implications of the crisis in the near term. Their work will be wrapped up by the end of August at the latest, so they might surface some good starting points for the board to pick up with, and, you know, they're basically surfacing observations, I think, of patterns and so forth of opportunity, and not to go much further with that, but I think that would be a place for the board maybe to pick up and run, run with that. We were just concerned, because so much of what we're doing now is essentially crisis management, that we were concerned right off that we would be missing out on even be able to think about some of the more strategic opportunities, so we wanted to set up a group pretty quickly to start to capture those, and to also free up a group to not be, and a lot of teachers are on that group as well, but to, to free up some space, so they're not so much confined by reacting to even the next four months or four weeks, but to think, just what are, what are the broader patterns that we're seeing here that we should address? So, I think there'll be some utility to that conversation. But I would agree, I think that's, fits nicely with the board's sort of intention to get, get to that tree line. Well, now, now we have some tree lines, so we're in uncharted territory probably more than we ever were.
Indeed. Very good, well, excellent conversation, thank you, Dan, and thank you, board members, for your good questions and comments. We're right on schedule for the public to be heard, and I think there may be some. Certainly a lot of people on this, on this meeting, 34 people listening in or participating, which is, we're delighted about. It's interesting that here we are in this so-called virtual meeting, and we have more participation and engagement in real time than we normally do in a face-to-face meeting. So, at this point, I want to turn to Suzanne and Maureen, who are our wonderful staff support for this meeting, and they're both helping on this meeting. Do you have for us a list of public who wish to be heard?
John, I don't have a list of public to be heard for this public to be heard, I have a short list for the afternoon public hearing.
Okay.
So, out of all... So out of all those, all the, all the folks that have called in, I'm not aware of who's, who's listening and who's wishing to offer public comment.
Okay, good. So let us pose this question to those of you who are not board members. Do any of you wish to be heard in this window of time that we have called public to be heard? Yeah, in which you may speak about any topic of concern to you.
Chairman Carroll?
Yes?
This is Richard Carney. I'm prepared to speak in the public general session.
All right, Mr. Carney, let us, let, let me pose the question again. We'll have you on, let me see if there's anybody else so we get some ideas to how many people we have who would like to speak during this 15-minute period. Is there anybody else who wishes to be heard in this time?
Uh, hello?
Yes.
Hi, this is George Rooney. I would like to be heard.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. And is there anyone else? All right, then, there may be some others. Mr. Carney, let's start with you, sir, and I'd like you to, to limit your remarks to five minutes, please.
Uh, Mr. Carroll, this is Barb Brody. I'm not sure you got me.
Oh, I did not. Ms., Ms. Brody, okay? We have three of... All right, Mr. Carney, go ahead and start, please.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members, Board of Education, Commissioner Carroll, Chairman Carroll. My name is Richard Carney. I'm from Middlebury, Vermont. I'm a full-time driver educator and traffic safety teacher at Woodstock Union High School and the owner of Upper Valley Driving Academy. I come before you today in the general comment portion of your meeting as president of the Vermont Driver Traffic Safety Education Association. I'm honored to share with you the unified voice of our association's Board of Directors and membership. On Monday morning, we became aware, in our, we became aware that in your deliberations today, you'll be asked to consider a proposal put forth by the Agency of Education and the Department of Motor Vehicles to consider that pursuant to its powers to waive rules under State Board Rule 1260, the State Board waived for the duration of the state of emergency the requirement in State Board Rule 2351 that to be approved, a driver education course must include at least six hours of behind-the-wheel instruction by a certified driver education instructor. The Vermont Driver Traffic Safety Education Association consists of members both from the private and public sectors. We unanimously oppose the proposed rule changes and question the need for such change at this time without input with educators. The proposal before you reads, the Vermont Department of Motor Vehicles is under significant pressure from legislators to waive the in-person requirements for driver education courses and has asked that the Agency of Education and the Board of Education work with it to waive the requirement that approved courses include behind-the-wheel instruction by a driver educator. We find this to be contrary to our findings. Association members have reached out to legislators, school administrators, and parents over the last 24 hours. In these conversations, we have found that there is no significant pressure to waive the requirement that approved courses include behind-the-wheel instruction by a driving instructor. On the contrary, we are appreciative of our, they are appreciative of our commitment to continue giving students the best driver education possible. We want you to know that the Vermont Driver Education and Traffic Safety Community take great pride in the education we provide. Now more than ever, we remain ready and committed to resuming high-quality behind-the-wheel driving instruction when the appropriate time is identified. As proper precautions are put in place, we will see our students and families through this current situation. Driver education is akin to a three-legged stool in which our student sits atop. A student is perched atop this stool, parents, teachers, and the community support the stool. If you remove any of the three supports, the seat will tumble and the student will fall. Recent surveys have shown that removing a highly skilled educator from the equation translates to higher rates of motor vehicle violations and increased crash rates. It is not best practice. The 2017 Association of National Stakeholders in Traffic Safety, ANFE, and the National Highway Transportation Safety Administration, NITSA, collaboratively published the Novice Team Driver Education and Training Administrative Standards. It calls upon states to increase the required instructional hours to a minimum of 45 hours of classroom theory, 10 hours behind the wheel, and 10 hours of observation.
Mr. Carney, you have one minute left.
Yes, sir. Vermont driver educators are now required to provide 30 hours of classroom, 6 behind-the-wheel, 6 of observation, far below the national standard. The proposal before you puts forth that the rules do not require behind-the-wheel components by the Department of Motor Vehicles, only the Board of Education. That part is not true. However, the spirit of the law and the resulting is spelled out in the Department of Motor Vehicles' own policy, which requires that driver educators like myself adhere in the delivery of behind-the-wheel driving standards. The Driver Education Board of Directors has worked diligently to come up with possible avenues to explore and develop as we collaboratively move forward with our driver education continuation of learning plan. On April 9th, both commissioners, both Commissioner and Secretary Dr. French, were sent an email with an offer to work collaboratively. As of yet, the association has not been called upon for our input. We ask you that if you deny the waiver request before you, we offer the, we offer that the board provide direction to the agencies to work collaboratively with our association to identify issues that case driver education will be forward. The goal is to work collaboratively to develop an alternative solution so a consensus can be presented later. Thank you for your time and willingness to listen to all parties. Driver education professionals working together, we are Vermont Strong. Respectfully, myself, Richard Carney, President.
Thank you, Mr. Carney, for your presentation. We'll now hear from Mr. Rooney. Mr. Rooney, please limit yourself to five.
Yeah, I can certainly do that. I'm here to support Richard and his statements and to support the driver ed community. As former past president of the Vermont Driver and Traffic Safety Education Association, I have a vested interest in the outcome of today. As an instructor at Middlebury Union High School, I have a vested interest in the outcome of today. And as a member of the community, I have a vested interest of the outcome of today. I too have been in contact with parents and administrators and others, legislators and so on, and the first reaction I receive is, why would they do that? I'm not feeling the pressure to drop the six hours with my students. Of my 39 students, I've have, I've had only one specifically ask me, and I've only had two parents inquire about it. And I explained to them that as soon as we are allowed to get back in the car, we will get back in the car. And that's what we should be doing, because that's where the magic happens, in the car. I sent every one of you, the members, a brief note on Monday about my feelings, and I finished it the same way that I will finish this. These kids have waited a while before they could do this. Waiting a few more months won't kill them, literally. It won't kill them. I don't believe that this is a good idea, and I support the VDTSEA's opinion that is the same. And that's my final word.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Rooney. And Ms. Brody, are you there? And if so, please limit yourself to five minutes at most.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Barb Brody. I've been a driver and traffic safety educator for 35 years. I've taught at the high school level, and I presently teach at the Center of Technology in Essex. I've taught at the university level, and I've worked for the Agency of Education as their traffic safety consultant. I wholeheartedly agree with Mr. Richard Carney's thoughts. You all have received my letter and that you know my concerns. You know that I've been willing to work with both agencies to figure out a better solution than having parents teach the behind-the-wheel phase of driver education and to provide assistance in helping DMV with the testing phase of learning permits and driver licensing under certain conditions. Please consider denying this waiver and bringing us together to think of a better solution to this problem. I appreciate your time and your efforts in this situation.
Thank you, Ms. Brody. Is there anybody else listening in who wishes to speak during the public comment period? We have a little bit of time left. Yes, please.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes, please, identify yourself.
Uh, Jody Normadell from Dumerson.
Yes.
And I did send you a quick email. Having listened to these gentlemen and this lady talk about the driver's ed teachers, I understand their frustration. What I would like to see happen is something substantive in their approach so that these students that are in the driver education courses now could be able to get their six hours of driving with the approved instructor. As it stands now, down in our area, we have one driver's ed teacher and we have a backlog of children, of students, trying to get driver's ed. If they have, if they can't get it in, and some can't get it till they're a senior in high school, if they can't get it in, then it costs a minimum of $800 and up to get private lessons, and a lot of people cannot afford that. So whether you do a waiver or not today, I would hope there would be a solution for the students that are already in the works. Thank you, John, and I'll, I'll mute myself.
Thank you very much for speaking to us. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to us during this public comment?
Yes, please.
Please, identify yourself.
My name is Melissa Manson. I am a private driver educator in Franklin County, Vermont.
Ms. Manson, we're, we're a little low on time. Can you limit your comments to three minutes, please?
Absolutely. I've checked in with all of the parents in my current class to see how they felt about this waiver, and 13 out of 14 of them were adamantly opposed. They're here for my professional instruction, and they're concerned that if they're in charge of the job of educating their teenagers, that they're going to pass on all of their own bad habits. I am 100% committed to doing everything I need to, to reach the common goal of successful and safe drivers. So I'm strongly opposed to you waiving the driving requirement with a professional. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manson. I think that, that ends the period of time we have for public comment. Board members, are you ready to move on to the next topic, which is, as it happens, item G, the waiver request? Who will speak for the agency and the department in support of this waiver request?
This is Dan. I believe we have some staff available.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to speak at some time.
Uh, yes, well, certainly, if you wish to speak on this topic, Bill, is that what you mean?
Yes.
Yeah, let us, let us, let the agency make their presentation before we...
Very good.
Go into other things.
So, John, this is Emily Simmons.
Yes.
General Counsel for the Agency of Education. If I could take a moment to ask whether Rachel Smith, an attorney with our office, is present? If she is, she'll give the presentation.
Yes, thank you, Emily. Rachel, are you there?
Hi, yes, I am present.
All right. Are you the one who's designated to present this? I take it that's, yes, Emily's nodding. So take it away, Emily, let's hear from you.
Hi, so this is Rachel Smith. So this began when we were contacted by the Department of Motor Vehicles, and they asked the Agency of Education to work with us to help waive this requirement because they are very concerned about the backlog of tests that will accrue, and they believe that the testing requirements that drivers will have to undergo will serve as an adequate check to ensure that students who haven't gotten enough education during the period when the waiver is in effect, won't get their driver's licenses. And we do have folks from the DMV standing by to answer any questions you might have about all of that. It is the position of the Agency of Education that in this state of emergency, when there are likely a number of people who will face hardship if they aren't allowed to take their driver's ed courses now and complete them, and if they are qualified and able to pass the test, then to get their driver's licenses and be able to work this summer, provide childcare, whatever needs may be, that this is an appropriate waiver. And I'd also like to note that the Agency of Education would like to slightly amend its recommendation so that the waiver would last through either the end of the state of emergency or the fiscal year 2020 school year, whichever is longer, just for administrative convenience.
Fine.
And, Mr. Chair, this is Emily.
Go ahead.
Also from the agency, we have the division director of the, the relevant division, Anne Borgnaros, here.
Okay, good, thank you. In order, just for process purposes, let's get the motion on the table so that we're speaking to a motion. Board members, you've been sent the amended proposed motion with regard to this waiver request. Is there a member who will make the motion? Board members, this doesn't mean you endorse the motion, it's simply to get the motion on the table so that we know what we're talking about.
This is Kathy, I'll make that motion.
Okay, would you, can you read it? Do you have it in front of you? You're muted, Kathy.
It keeps going back, I'm not sure what's on with my, I apologize. I, whoops, there it goes again, sorry. I moved that pursuant to its power to waive rules under State Board 1260, the State Board waives until the end of the state of emergency or the FY 2020 school year, whichever is later, the requirement in State Board Rule 2351 that to be approved, a driver education course must include at least six hours of behind-the-wheel instruction by a certified driver education instructor.
Very good, thank you. Is there a second?
I can second that, Kim Gleason.
Seconded by Kim Gleason. Before we now, let, let us see if we have a few questions. We can certainly hear from more expertise in the agency and the department. Bill Mathis, you spoke early and wanted to make some comments or observations. Is there anybody else on, on the board who has a question or a comment to make about the proposal in front of us?
Kim Gleason, can I inquire why it would be the later of those two dates? If we were to go back into session in mid-May, would it not be conceivable that those hours would be able to be with an instructor?
I'll, I'll take this one. So the later of the two is based on our uncertainty of when the state of emergency will end, and we're not anticipating for any reason that it would include next school year, but if we're wrong, and it does, we would want the same waiver to apply to students But if we're wrong, and it does, we would want the same waiver to apply to students who are learning remotely in a subsequent school year.
Okay.
Wait, I'm sorry, I, no, because I thought that it said, or the end of FY 2020 school year, whichever is later. So that would not impact next year's, it wouldn't waive responsibility for next year either.
So, if the state of emergency were to be lifted tomorrow, the end of the school year would be later than the end of the state of emergency. And so the waiver would still apply without ambiguity created for this school year. We were worried about whether folks would be clear on what happens if it's that order of events, that the state of emergency ends first and the school year ends after.
So, it, in other words, this would end at the end of the state of the emergency or the end of June of 2020, whichever comes first?
But I guess that doesn't, yeah, so I see that. I wasn't seeing how that aligned with your concern that it be a state of emergency extends till next school year. But I, I think that that flip-flops the answer. But I am also not understanding in the version that you described, Emily, if the state of emergency were to be lifted May 15th, why would we want to waive the remainder? Let's assume they were probably halfway through the semester. They're probably halfway through their hours or something approximating that. Let's say there are hours left to be done. Would it not be conceivable that if it were to be lifted before the end of the school year, that those hours could not happen?
The waiver, if it were granted, as the motion proposes, wouldn't prevent anyone from getting the hours, but they would not be required to get the hours. That's, our recommendation is, as the motion stated, because we just can't be sure what circumstances districts will find themselves in in any of these hypotheticals that we're describing. And we, if you're going to grant the waiver, we thought that it should give maximum flexibility.
Are there other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, Bill, go ahead.
I'm concerned about this, and I went back and looked through this. And again, I'm wondering why we do not have any correspondence or representation from the DMV, though they are presented as having certain positions on this, that they think that the agency or the State Board should take action on.
Bill, we have access to DMV representatives online right now. So if you have questions you'd like to pose to the DMV, you're welcome to do so.
Yes, I'd like to know what section of Rule 11 R6 applies here. I could not find it online, though it's quoted in the memo. And then it's presented that this is an agency kind of thing. And I would like to know what it is. And there's also the thing is that when this emergency is over, whenever that may be, people would be, have the chance to be held harmless and get their six hours. So I'm trying to understand exactly what is at stake here that's going to be lost. Is it, like any other subject matter, would have to be made up or dealt with in some way?
Is there a person from the agency who will answer that question?
So, good afternoon. This is Commissioner Wanda Manoli, Vermont Department of Education. I, so I love that. I started my career there. That was a faux pas, sorry, everyone. Chair Carroll, that, now I'm smiling. I have with me Mike Smith, who's the Director of Operations, who oversees our exam unit. And I also have Sven Federow, who's online, who is our Assistant AG. Mr. Mathison, it's wonderful to hear your voice. I would, I think the, your first question, if I, if I understand it, the State Board action item speaks to Vermont Department of Motor Vehicle Rule 11 RC. And I think it's ours, let me, I'm just going there.
It's R6.
R6, thank you. That is an administrative rule that we have in place for the private instructors that we actually certify to provide driver's education and in some cases, give road exams. Sven, do you want to add any clarity to that? And, and so while we have that, that rule that actually references the State Board of Education rule, we are trying to bring the two rules together so they are consistent. That is part of our, one of our goals in this proposal.
The only thing I would add is that the DMV Rule 11 only applies to private driver training schools. So it actually doesn't apply to programs that are exclusively within the Agency of Education's jurisdiction in administering driver's ed courses. And you could see that in the State Board rules, beginning with 2350.
Very good, thank you. Bill, does this answer your question?
Not really. I'm trying to figure out why this is being brought at this time, which is the preliminary question. But then, as this thing is going to unfold, we've got four months until the beginning of school. In any case, we don't know when this is going to end. And as we saw last month, we took an action to waive a certain number of days. And then we're going to have to come back and look at that again. And it seems like when we get started, we're going to have a whole series of these kinds of things that we're going to have to deal with. And I'm just wondering why we're bringing this forward, four months ahead of when school would start, in any case.
Yeah, I guess that's the question to both the department and the agency is, what's the problem here that we're trying to?
So.
Go ahead, go ahead, Emily.
Thank you, Commissioner Manoli. Emily Simmons. The situation we're trying to avoid is hardship for students who were enrolled in driver's ed this year, old enough to take the exam to receive their license and would have been holders of driver's licenses this summer and going forward, seeking employment where they have to drive, providing assistance to childcare and their families. You can imagine the long list of hardships that might, a student might face through no fault of their own. Their school is closed and they are not able to access this instruction during the period of closure.
Thank you. We have heard also that a motivating consideration has been a backlog at the Department of Motor Vehicles. Is that, is that correct?
This is Commissioner Manoli. So, we had to, when the Governor issued my, the directive for the Vermont Department of Motor Vehicle to cease in-person transactions, one of our areas that was impacted the most is our exams. And for the members of the board, please understand exams are CDLs, driver permits, new learners, new, new drivers, medical exams. We had to cancel over 2,000 exams. And as time has gone on, we can estimate that there is a backlog of 2,000 a month. We have limited capacity within the department to be able to retest, to provide these new tests, to issue driver's permits, to get students ready for the fall session. So part of the directive from the Governor, in my directive, was to find alternative means and to be creative where I can on how I'm going to bring exams, all of these exams back into our book of business. One of the areas that we have a very high, a high level of requests is for driver permits and for new drivers, for students that are completing their course at the end of the spring semester. And that we, so we started looking at alternatives. And, and where we looked at that, we saw that there could be opportunity. And I want to emphasize this because part of our plan is looking at opportunity with educators and our private schools to also help us test these new students if they are willing to do so. So we're looking at a whole packet. And that, and, and the one piece that we have not been able to find an alternative for is this six-hour rule that sits under the driver, that sits under the State Board of Education. And so we said, if schools cannot provide that, six hours behind the wheel, we are not going to be able to test these individuals, which gets into the hardships for the students and being able to take their license. And so we evaluated the, you know, having an understanding of what is being provided through curriculum now. Every student that has to, that comes in to be tested, to be a new license holder, has to have a minimum of 40 hours of driving time. That is performed, and it is a different setting, by their parent or guardian, and 10 hours of evening driving. And with that requirement, we felt that the six hours was an area that we could, and we've requested this waiver for this group of students, for the timeframe that we're talking about. And I would just say, I would support the amendment that, that education has put before you that when the executive order is lifted or to the end of the fiscal July 2020 school year, I do not know when we will start serving public, and at the Vermont DMV. And I, okay.
Commissioner Manoli, thank you.
You're welcome.
Another question that either you or the Agency of Education can answer. The, the sentence, the paragraph says, "The Department of Motor Vehicles is under significant pressure from legislators." Several of us have heard from legislators who oppose this waiver or have concerns about it. So tell us about the significant pressure from legislators to waive these requirements.
So this is Commissioner Manoli again. I actually have had some conversations when this was drafted. We, I have received questions and I've had conversations with multiple legislators. I think that if we could redraft it today, I definitely would not choose the word that we are under significant pressure. But I am being asked as a commissioner, what are my alternatives for providing testing for students that are passing and for driver permits?
And tell us about the work you have done with the certified drivers community to devise an alternative.
And so I, I've worked internally with my team. We've conducted a survey with all of the educators and in partnership with the Agency of Education on who would be willing to perform road tests for their students or for other students. I will say on the record, I do not have this April 9th letter that was referenced earlier. And I will go through my clutter to look for it. So, the proposal brought forth to you was an internal proposal. We did not do an outreach to the individuals who have spoken today.
So no consultation with stakeholders?
Correct.
Finally, this is perhaps more to the Agency of Education in the so-called green sheet that we received. On the second page, the, the topic is educational, education implications. This is a standard question that's addressed in these kinds of analyses. And the answer is none. So apparently, the proposition here is that parents can provide the six hours of, on the road, supervision and training and teaching as well and as effectively as certified driving instructors. It's hard to imagine that there is no educational implication of this proposal.
Hello, this is Emily Simmons. I'll take this one. Certainly, we don't mean that there's no educational implication to these students. There is an educational implication to every decision that's being taken during this emergency. And everyone is trying to use their best sense and keep the best interests of students at the forefront. And here, students are receiving all of their instruction, whether it's driver's education or chemistry lab, in a remote basis. And so we view the waiver, if it were granted, as being neutral relative to all the other static that is going on in students' education, to waive this requirement that literally cannot be completed while we're under the state of emergency. And students' education that they've undertaken up to the point of school closure would not get them anywhere in being able to be tested for driver's licenses.
Thank you.
I have a question. Kathy, did you want to go? I've already, I have more questions, but I'm happy to let you go first.
Yeah, mine is quite, probably quick. I realize that to every student that might not be able to do it, it's a significant hit for them, right? But do we have any idea how many students we're talking that this would affect for this? They must be students that are already enrolled and all of those. Do we have any numbers?
Yes, I don't remember the number, but someone on the call, perhaps Ann or Tammy, if she's on the call, has that number.
Yes, this is Anne Bordnarrows. I'm the Division Director for Federal Education Support Programs. And I can give you some information about the numbers. Typically, in a given semester, about 1,800 students from participating driver's ed through schools in Vermont and another 600 or so through private driver's ed programs. They are registered in a system called DEX, which the instructors enter them into that system and it, it keeps track of their progress. And it also is a way of verifying, for example, that they have a permit and they're eligible and that they don't get any fraction during the time that then makes them ineligible to continue and all. So teachers are supposed to be entering them. Of that 2,400 that we would expect to be in there, only about 1,320 are in there right now, which is both Agency of Ed and DMV. And it's not unusual in any given semester for teachers to, sort of, for students to kind of dribble in over the semester with their permits and all, so not be entered in the DEX system in the early part of the semester. But that means there's about 1,000 that we don't know of, whether they are in fact still enrolled in the course, whether they ever enrolled in the course and where they are. But of the group that we do know who are in there, the 1,320, 329 have already passed driver's ed. So the waiver wouldn't apply. They've already completed all the requirements. So that's about a fourth, a little less than a fourth of that number. Five students have dropped out of driver ed entirely. 14 have already failed the course, meaning they've already been deemed by their instructor to not have participated in enough of the, the course to pass, regardless of what happens from here on out. And 972 of the 1,320 are incomplete, which means that they're in progress potentially of doing the classroom instruction online and have at least four hours of driving to complete. Most of the time, they spread the driving out over the semester. So some of those students have already had some driving. We don't know at the end of this period how many of those 972 students will actually complete the requirements that are laid out in the waiver, which they still need to complete the classroom 30 hours successfully. And they, they still need to demonstrate that they had the driving time with their parents in order, even with this waiver, to be able to move forward. And they have to be 16. Some of these students are 15, so they're not eligible and the waiver doesn't apply because they took it before they're eligible to actually sit for the exam. So that's a rough shot. I can give more information if you'd like.
And so that I'm clear, this is, this is a complete waiver of those six hours that are deemed to be in, have been through instruction of a driver's ed teacher. It's not adding six additional hours to the parent time, right? It's a complete waiver of those, those hours. It's a complete waiver of those, those hours.
It's a waiver of the six, it's a waiver of the requirement of the six hours of instruction by a professional driver's ed teacher, licensed driver's ed teacher. As Emily said earlier, the students who are 15 or the students who don't feel ready, for example, in this current semester's group, could still wait and take their in-vehicle instruction in the summer or fall as soon as we're allowed to have that kind of contact again. But it doesn't require those students who complete the classroom part successfully, do what they need to do in terms of documenting the 40 hours with their parents, including the night driving, and, and have, and then go to take their test, they're 16, and feel they're ready. It doesn't preclude them from being allowed to sit for that test. And our assumption is that the test itself is going to weed out those who aren't capable of doing the in-person driving part safely because they won't pass the test. But, but it doesn't prevent those students from waiting if they want, and many of them will have to by age anyway, from getting that instruction later. It just doesn't say that if you couldn't get it and you absolutely want to take your test and for your own personal reasons, you know, you need a summer job or you need to help your family or whatever, that this one six-hour requirement won't prevent you from sitting for that exam if you've completed all the other requirements.
Thank you.
And I don't, I just want to add that I don't think anyone in the Agency of Ed believes that, that this is optimal by any means. I think having instruction from a trained driver ed instructor is why we have a license and why we have this in our rules. It's essential. But in this situation, we're kind of in, in strange and unusual times. And so we're trying to balance what's best practice with, with what some students may need and what DMV is saying they're up against in terms of pressure, you know, with numbers of people that have to be tested moving forward.
Lastly, I'm sorry, lastly, do we know, will we know which of those students that test did not take the 40, excuse me, the six hours, did not get it? In the end, will we know that? And then as well, is there any presumed new liability for having had this as a requirement all these years and waiving it? Are we assuming any additional liability if, who knows? In the future, something occurs, right?
So Kathy, valid concern and, and no, because remember, a student still has to pass the DMV administered test in the end. That is the public safety check on who can be licensed and who cannot. The requirement that a student complete a course, you could say, I see it as a check on folks taking the test before they're ready because there is a cost to taking that DMV test. And Commissioner Minoli told us the other day that actually can get very expensive for multiple test takers. And so this in no way impacts the requirement that you pass that test.
Thank you.
This is Jenna. Yeah, I, I have a question. I'm just wondering, do we have any numbers around the, the number of students who don't have access to a car, a vehicle from their own families that, that would be taking this test in a vehicle provided by a driver ed institution? Just curious about this being another equity issue for kids who don't have the means, won't be able to cash in on this deal for sure.
Who wants to answer that question?
I can make a stab at it. This is Anne Bordenaro from Agency of Ed. I don't believe we have that information. I mean, that's a continuing problem in normal times, that some of our students, we do expect, and DMV expects, that students will have all this additional time, including night driving, with a licensed adult driver, someone over 18. It doesn't have to be a parent per se. And so that is a normal requirement, and it's probably the case, and I'm sure it's the case, that some, for some of those kids in normal times, that's still a struggle because their family may not have a car, for example, and they have to find an aunt or an uncle or something. So that isn't changed by this situation, but that is an equity issue all the time.
Other questions, comments?
Yes, John, Kim, again. I am thinking I maybe misheard something, but I heard people testify earlier that we're from the very groups that are supposed to be engaged with to take the backlog of 2,000 exams that need to be scheduled, like the private providers or the educators that are also duly licensed to be able to give people these exams. And I heard them testify against this. And I'm not sure how waiving the six-hour requirement has there be less people wanting to be tested.
Hi, this is Commissioner Minoli, if I can. So right now, all driving exams are performed at the Department of Motor Vehicles. With exception, we have five certified examiners in private schools that can also give tests. One of our proposals that we have engaged in through a survey is, and the authority for the Commissioner of DMV, I can certify someone to give an exam. And we are looking at opportunities with the school system, with the public education system, and with our private partners to create an opportunity and certify them if they so choose to want to give the driving exam as well as the educational component. This is a choice. It is not going to be a requirement. It is an alternative to help us, help the students, complete their full course and to get their license. They may all, even with this proposal, they all could say no. The survey was about 60%, if I'm remembering correctly, that would be interested in testing their students as well as testing other students to help during this time of, of crisis.
I guess I just, it does, it just seems, without having asked that question, those who testified, and maybe I have their affiliations wrong. I thought I understood them to be the driver's ed educators who are, and those in the associations of those who offer this privately, speaking to the, this not being a good idea. And if that's not changing, if they're not willing to do this without that component, I guess I'm, I'm questioning if this helps you with your backlog? Or maybe I misunderstood their testimony?
It, well, it would still, it would still help. I mean, right now, without this waiver, and, and this is the, the relationship with education in DMV, if you don't, if this waiver is not approved for the six-hour, for the timeframe we're talking about, we simply won't be testing these students for their driver's test. And because there's, there's no flexibility. So that's, that's the first piece, and that's what we're addressing. Also, to help bring businesses back and to move Vermont forward as we roll out slowly, making services available to Vermonters, we are looking at other opportunities to help us with the backlog. So they're two, they're two separate, they're two separate pieces. So the waiver will, for the students who could not get the six hours of driving time behind the wheel, if we don't have the waiver, we will not test them until they've been able to accomplish that. And I, I can't speak for school districts. I don't know how they will do that. For students who have it, if you don't pass the waiver, we will test them. And we are hoping with the partners of the education system and the, the private driving schools, some of them will be willing to support and help us test these new drivers.
So if I understand the waiver proposal, it seems to say, in fact, says clearly that the students will complete under the supervision of a licensed driver, they'll do their six hours under the supervision of a licensed driver in their household. That's the person that's going to do the six hours of, of, of training. So the, I, I think there's a, there's a lot of concern. Certainly, I've heard, I've received concern from a couple senators on the Senate Education Committee and others, people who are not in the business, who are concerned about the public safety consequences of having young people who have not had benefit of driver education in the car with an experienced educator on the highways, even if they passed your test, they haven't had the benefit of something that we, as a matter of policy, have said for decades, all children, all young people should have before they take their examination. So I personally have a, since, since this proposal has been developed without any significant consultation with the education community on the ground, including the licensed certified instructors, it doesn't feel ready to me for prime time. I, I, it feels like a very top-down, expedient way to address a bureaucratic problem of a, of a backlog of unattended cases. I understand that all of this creates an inconvenience for some young people who were, they thought, on the cusp of getting their driver's license. But that's not uncharacteristic of life in these times, in many, many ways. All children's educations are being slowed or stopped or compromised during this time. So my inclination is to ask you to come back with a solution that has more broad engagement and support. I don't know, board members, what's your thought?
This is Kathy. I would agree, John, I get the same sense. And I think that truly, if this is consideration now, under these conditions, then it should be a considerate, let's have a full discussion about it being consideration from now on out. And I'm not sure that we would find our way to that end. But what I'm saying is, is that to dismiss it now just doesn't feel right. And, you know, we're going to be calling upon the education world to consider some things they've never considered before in a lot of other, you know, areas. And so if we're approaching it now, let's be ready to approach it full-on from here on out. Because to me, it would seem that you're saying it's not necessary and it doesn't make a difference for those 1,300 to 2,400 kids that are out there. And I don't agree, you know, I don't know that I agree or have enough information to agree. It just feels too rushed.
So I'll speak one last time for the agency, if I could. Our primary and really our only motivation in asking you to do this is thinking about the hardship on that group of students who fully expected throughout their high school career and their personalized learning plan and their progress of classes that they took through high school to be licensed by the end of this 2020 school year, assuming they pass that test. So we're just worried about those students. And second, I would just point out that the requirement is six hours of instruction. It's, it's not 25 hours of instruction. It's one hour a day for a week that would be waived.
I think, I think important to that is, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Sabina, did you want to get in?
I just wanted to like make the point that it seems like if you're saying that these students were wanting to be tested, like granted, if we have to stay-at-home order, these students can't go out and get their six hours, and they also can't go get tested. So we would have to wait, either way, they have to wait for it to be safe for them to go get tested. And then by the time that it's safe for them to get tested, why not, you know, they can go and get their six hours? It just seems like, like I said, like it's one hour a day for a week that, and it's like, so they have to wait one extra week to get their license. I feel like it's not worst-case scenario to, they'll be required.
Could I answer Sabina's?
Have the board discussing this now, please. Other board members?
I'm curious about Emily's response, but I do have, so here's, I see no problem in tabling this, at least till the main meeting. There's, this is not urgent until people are able to be back in school. Students would not have been done before the beginning of June, at the earliest, with their course and their hours. It might provide opportunity to have a better sense of the numbers of how many hours have students been able to accomplish. And the private folks that are out there and those in the public schools, I'd feel probably better if I knew that there were four hours of instruction with a professional that somebody is weighing in on a student's readiness based on that. So I, I think this is insufficient information to make this decision, and I don't hear from those who testified the interest in waiving this. And they are in fact the very people that you're looking to certify to help you take the backlog of the canceled exams and add to it students who didn't have to make the six hours to be eligible to test. I, I don't think we would want to delay this indefinitely, but I see no problem in getting broader engagement with those who are necessary to have this be safe and successful and have it serve any public good versus just removing a responsibility and possibly adding to those number of tests that need to be scheduled.
Thank you, Kim. I think I heard Kyle wanting to speak up.
Yes, all I was going to add was, the plan that we have before us, I think, just, it feels a tad rushed, and it, it just feels like we're compromising safety in terms, just based on testimony that we've gotten over email and through other testimony of people who are experts in this and do this type of instruction. It just seems repeatedly that they've said this is not a good idea to cut out this type of experience. And in my own experience of doing driver education, passing a paper test and actually getting behind the wheel and doing it is two very different things. So I think we really need that six hours, or at least four, as Kim might have mentioned.
Thank you. Yes, Bill?
I'm a little bit confused here. In one sense is that some people are saying, yes, we've got to have this right now. Or maybe we're going to have it a little later. It's kind of hard to tell because it seems to be going both ways. And I still haven't heard anything that convinces me that we've got a way to take care of the backlog in any sensible way it's been referred to. But it seems like it's drifting in and out of the fog. And so, and the other thing is, I don't feel a sense of urgency given all the other problems that we have at this point in time. And this will probably take four months till September until we can resolve the matter anyway. And so I would move that we table this at this point in time.
Can I ask procedurally?
This is Peter. Can I have, can I voice my, my?
Of course, of course.
I, I wish that the affected people, the students that, that are impacted by, by this situation were, we didn't hear from them. We've, we have not heard from them at all. But I live in a rural part of the state where transportation is absolutely critical to get jobs and just get about. And if this is going to impact and, and somehow adversely impact students and young people and families in terms of going about their, their daily affairs and, and working and whatnot, I'd be concerned about that. But we haven't really heard, at least I haven't heard strongly, strong evidence of this in regards to those affected, affected students and, and parents. And I wish we had.
Yes, it's, it's a proposal without very much actual information by affected parties, whether they be educators or students. Other, other?
I would just.
It's been moved to table the motion. Is there a second to that motion?
Can I ask a question procedurally first, John?
Please.
Would it have to come back to us exactly as it is if it's tabled? Because I wouldn't feel any better about it, like, to come back to exactly what it is.
The, it would come back as it was, as it was tabled, and it could be amended immediately in response to whatever the proponents of this waiver would come back with.
Then I will second the tabling of this item to a future date with hopefully responsiveness to the areas that have been raised.
Is there, it's been moved and seconded that the motion be, the motion to, to waive this reform be tabled? Is there discussion of that motion to table?
I guess I would again say that I would hope it would come back with more clarity from the affected parties. And that might include information around, the percentage has already been accomplished in those hours. It might. It might include a plan for potentially whether or not we can expect that the driver's educators, if this is all lifted, are willing to work with students, you know, in the end of June to get these hours. And I heard them say how important these were and I know there's parts of, those are parts of their hours that they would normally be teaching that aren't able to be done right now. So perhaps there's collaboration there. We've had correspondence from Vermont NEA. So I think, I think there's a bunch of information that could round this out to understand either this is important, and I appreciate Peter's statement. I mean, students who were expecting to be able to drive this summer who can't because of this would be, if this is all lifted, that would be a hardship, I believe, and I would hate for us to be doing that. But we don't have enough information. And just to the idea that there's a backlog and we haven't heard too much about how this solves that, I guess the only thing I'll say, Bill, is that it's not our responsibility to clear backlog. We set standards and so that is where my focus is in this matter. So thanks.
Thank you. Are you ready to vote on the, on the motion to table? Will you take the roll, please, Maureen?
Sorry, I was trying to unmute myself. I just have a procedural question. Do you have to do anything with the original motion that was named?
No. No. Motion is tabled.
So Kyle Corchewa?
Yes.
Kim Gleason?
Yes.
Kathy LaVoy?
Yes.
Phil Mathis?
Yes.
John O'Keefe? Oliver Olson? Peter Pelz?
No, and I'd like to explain my vote.
Jenna O'Farrell?
Yes.
John Carroll?
Yes. Peter, we're happy to hear from you.
Thank you. I, you know, in this, this crisis situation, I just, I, I, I really, we're sort of in this bureaucratic standoff and I'm really concerned about the impact, the possible impact on what we're doing. And I, I would, I'm voting against it because I really do think, I'm really feeling for the kids that might be affected and even though they're not represented, I know that it could have an adverse impact. So I'm just, that's why I voted no.
Thank you, Peter. The next item on our agenda is item H, the discussion of Act 173. And for that, Dan, are you still available?
Yes, I am still here. I do have to leave by 3:30.
Okay, well, oh, all right. Well, let us, let's maybe just do this discussion. In fact, I think it was perhaps your office that suggested that we add this topic, sort of an update on where Act 173 stands. Do you want to go ahead with that or shall I describe what happened yesterday?
I think, why don't you go ahead and jump in with your, your update?
Okay, all right, well, I will. So there has been a bill put together by, jointly by House and Senate Education Committees. It's a very unusual world that they're living in where they're actually almost acting as unicameral body. And this, this, this draft request for a bill would address a bunch of scheduling challenges that have, that impact Act 173 and its rollout. As you can well imagine, there's a terrific amount of preparatory work at schools and in collaborative agency necessary to implement the rules 1300 and 2360, which you all have worked on. And under the, under the arrangement as it exists under, under present law and rule, those rules would go into effect on the 1st of July in 2021, next year. Those are the rules that are still right now in the APA process. Those are the rules that, starting at 4, we will be hearing testimony on, 4:30 or is it 4:00? So the real, the reality in the world, though, is that it's very hard for folks to start doing the training and the practice, the training for how special education will be delivered differently in the communities, training and the funding is going to work. All that kind of stuff is, is become very, very difficult to undertake at this time and for the foreseeable future. And so for that reason, people have advocated, virtually all the stakeholders have agreed and advocated that the implementation date for the census-based funding, i.e. as determined by rules 1300 and 2360, should be pushed back a year to the 1st of July 2022. At the same time, as you know, we have this public comment period going on, on the rules. And the public comment period is all prescribed by the 3VSA 25, which is the Administrative Procedures Act. And that public comment period started on the 17th of April and will conclude on the 27th of May. But many of the people who would like to be commenting on these rules are frankly overwhelmed with responsibilities for children with special needs who are home and whose needs are being met by their caregivers and who frankly just don't have the bandwidth to wade through these rules and give us very useful comment and feedback. So we have been asked, would we extend the public comment period? And we have proposed to the House Committee on Education that the public comment period be extended until 31 December of this year. That is adding seven months to a public comment period that was initially six weeks long. In the hope that by the time school begins again, hopefully in the autumn, families of special needs children who have, would have interest in commenting will have a little bit more breathing room to give feedback on the rules as well as the stakeholders. So we had certainly received an awful lot of requests from people to extend the public comment period on the rules. And we have asked the House Committee to incorporate into the bill provisions that would allow us to do that. You can't just do it on your own, say so. There's an eight-month termination period for the APA rule process. We, we believe that we needed in statute to cover for that. And yesterday, we asked for that with the House Committee and they endorsed that idea. So I think that's going to survive the legislative process. So we will deal with that on the board. We'll have to figure out how to deal with that. We've got three hearings now scheduled. We should have a conversation if we can as to how to proceed. But right now, we ought to proceed with our three hearings, I think, because the bill hasn't passed. We don't, we are not out of the woods yet with this hearing period. So we'll have this first hearing today and then we're scheduled for another on the 6th of May and one on the 22nd. With regard to this rules for independent schools, that's a totally different kettle of fish. You'll recall in February that we had a good conversation with the stakeholders about that. And the conversation included the recognition that it would be really nice if the implementation of the census-based funding was coincident with, synchronized with the implementation of the new independent school funding rules. And we talked about doing that, you'll recall, in February. But it was agreed that we should not hold up the implementation of census-based funding. And it was also agreed that, that the independent school rules would best be implemented a year later, that is, in 2023, 2022. Simply because the independent schools would need that much time to be prepared. Now that the consensus has been established that the census-based funding will be rolled back a year to 2022, the independent schools people are advocating that their implementation should be, also be rolled back a year to 2023. In my testimony yesterday, I questioned that, even to the point of opposing it, saying that there's so many advantages to having a simultaneous implementation of both census-based funding and the independent school rules, that it's worth doing. The agency opposed that. The agency spoke on behalf of delaying yet another year, the independent schools, to 2023. And I think the sentiment of the committee was to align with the agency's perspective on that particular question. And we might hear more about that. My own personal views have not changed about it, but then again, we have not heard actively from the independent schools as to their rationale for needing two more years to get ready for implementation. Finally, we advocated that the date for initiating rulemaking, the independent school rulemaking, should be pushed back. You'll recall, we discussed this in February and I've alerted the Secretary to this concern for some time. The existing statute says that independent school rules must be initiated, that is, beginning the APA process, on the 1st of November of this year. And yet we know from experience that rulemaking is a very time-consuming process and everybody agrees, we could not be ready to start the rule, the APA process by November. No one, neither the agency nor the independent schools, nor even the advisory group thinks that that's doable. So there's a general agreement that we need to get legislative adjustment of this startup deadline. We proposed one March, the agency proposed one November, and I think we've settled on one June of 2021 as the date at which the independent school rules must be initiated, which means that since it takes about 10 months for the rulemaking work to get done before you can initiate it, it means that by this autumn at the very latest, the agency and the independent schools and the advisory group better get cracking on developing draft rules so that they will be ready for us to start the rulemaking process in June. So that's, the, the, the House Committee did not reach a conclusion about this latter point. They left that to the agency and the board to sort out. And I think we have an agreement on one June 2021 for initiating the independent school rules. That's all I know. Dan, you must have some other thoughts?
No, I think in some ways, your summary is more up to date than I can provide. Emily's been running point for us on this. Emily, if you're still available, do you have any other further thoughts?
Yes, just that I think the date that's going to be in the bill is June 30th, 2021, for initiating rulemaking on the 2,200 series. That's just what Legislative Council picked and it sounds good enough to me. Yeah, that's all I would have to add.
I'd like to add one thing. I am so glad, John, that you just said all of that because it still makes my head do this. You know, as far as the date, the process, the implementation, it just gets very, very confusing. It might be me.
Thank you, but you know, we're dealing with the easy part. The real hard part is putting all this, that's. And by the way, there was testimony yesterday from Jeff Fannin, and I'm sure Dan and Emily have heard this earlier, from Jeff speaking on behalf of Vermont NEA. And Jeff is questioning any of these implementation dates for Act 173, that is, saying in effect that the teachers feel profoundly ill-prepared for implementation of this. I mean, remember, Act 173 is first and foremost a law about changing the practice of the delivery of special education services and secondarily, changing the funding. And yet, as according to Jeff, we've done comparatively little by way of professional development. And if, if Emily or Dan has another perspective on this, we ought to hear it. But Jeff's concern was that very little has happened on, in professional development, either at the agency or at, in the, in the districts, to prepare the schools for changing their methods of practice, let alone for changing how we pay for it and account for it. So it, as, 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 as confusing as it may seem to us, it's, what we, what we are dealing with is really the tip of the iceberg. The real work is going to be at the schools and therefore at the agency. I wonder if you, Jeff, or you, Dan, or Emily, have any thoughts about, about the NEA perspective?
Yeah, I've heard Jeff's point of view and it's, it's a, it's a valid one for sure. I think, you know, the, the point, and I appreciate your acknowledgement of the heavy lifting, this is a major education policy and by far and away more complex than Act 46 in many ways because it touches so many different aspects of the system. The, the point I'd made when I was testifying, and I believe Jeff was in the room, Jeff Fannin, you know, I think part of the argument that professional development should precede implementation of the financial formula change is not necessarily, from my perspective, what the research pointed out. So the research is basically saying, you know, many of the professional development topics that we're talking about have been Vermont policy for over 20 years. There's nothing new here on the table. What the UVM study identified was precisely the financial construct that was preventing us from enacting those professional development approaches, meaning we do not have the incentives right. So as long as the financial incentives are wrong, we're not going to be able to enact our best practice in terms of professional development. So, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a valid concern and one we've wrestled with from the beginning with the Census-Based Advisory Group. But it is, it's sort of almost a chicken and egg kind of idea, but I would suggest that there's a significant amount of complexity in implementation timeline just on the financial piece because that's supposed to be phased in five years. And that wasn't just to give this professional development chance to kick in, it was also just to get the mechanics of the financial system to respond accordingly. But I, my read of it is, I don't see much new on the table in terms of change in practice, honestly. I think it's really, there is, are some things about staffing and we know there's been an over-reliance on paraeducators, for instance. That's also been well-established in several UVM studies. But I think it's, everyone's dissatisfied with the reimbursement model that we have and the incentives that come from that need to be addressed before we're going to make much progress, would be my assessment. So it is complex, so.
It is, it is. Yeah, and it's, I, I think your statement's really right on, Dan, and gives just a different perspective. It's a classic case of how you see things depends a lot on where you stand. And, and, and all of these realities, I think, are true. And they just have very different points of view and you can see why. I think, I think what we heard on January about proficiency-based learning is pertinent to this discussion in the sense that we heard that some districts really got on top of it and really embraced it and trained for it and the faculty was totally with it. And they seem to have had a, a real success at, at making proficiency-based learning work and be better than anything they'd done before. And yet, many, many districts had not had the professional development and the leadership and the focus at the local level that made that happen. And so much as I think, probably we'll see a similar differential rollout and if... And so much as I think probably we'll see a similar differential rollout and, and a resource building at the local level with this as well. And I'm sure Dan's right, this is a, this is a very heavy lift. It's a profound change, both in practice and in funding.
John, can I ask Dan a question?
Please.
Dan, could you be a, a, a little bit more clear on what you see the AOE's role in for the professional development on the spectrum?
Yeah, we've, you know, spent quite a bit of time really starting with last summer, gearing up for a conceptualization of that, and I think we've shared that work with you, and it's essentially going back to look at those elements that are existing in our regulation, as we call systems levers. So the areas that we identified in our current regulation that really, from our standpoint, manifest the, what should be the focus of this professional development are the coordination of curriculum. You know, once again, this is in our longstanding regulatory framework, that districts should have a coordinated curriculum, albeit we did move that to the supervisory union level in 2010 with the enactment of one, Act 153, but the, there's been a longstanding policy initiative around coordinated curriculum. And the point there would be, it's difficult to design a support continuum, which is essentially what's asked for in 173. It's, it's impossible or difficult to design that support continuum if you first don't have a well-articulated curriculum, so that's, that's an essential element, right behind that.
What about direct training? What about actually, you know, person-to-person direct training and help on that process?
Yeah, so that's, that's where I think we do have a role, but we also have a role largely focused on requiring school districts to do that sort of classroom-level training. So the requirement in regulation is that supervisory unions have coordination of curriculum. So the agency's focus, I think, should be on enacting that regulation, which is to help school districts describe and coordinate their curriculum, so that they in turn have the requirement for professional development, which is the next point I was going to make, because the requirement for professional development is also a supervisory union-level activity. So I think I can talk about these four, we say, "systems levers," that from our standpoint need to be addressed for any reform, but particularly this reform that requires an articulation of student supports across the entire spectrum of education. But then certainly, the agency can come in across the top of that, and as we have all along, for instance, our Math For All Learners Initiative, which is a statewide professional development at the classroom level to shift practice on how to teach math in that kind of construct for all learners. So we, we will continue and always be involved in those sort of classroom-level things. But to John's observation about, you know, sort of the heavy lift and the inability of some districts to do proficiency-based learning, no matter what initiative, our hypothesis, no matter what initiative we lay on top of the system, of which there have been far too many laid on top of the system in the last six or seven years, we won't, we won't see predictable and good outcomes until we address some of the systems deficiencies of our school districts. And that gets into, you know, turnover of staff, having not well-articulated curriculum and other structures that enable people to do the work at the classroom level.
Other comments or questions? All right. We are, we're scheduled to be at this time, Dan, you, you need to leave. You said when, 3:30?
Yeah, in about two minutes, yeah. Sorry.
Just thought I'd ask.
Driving's not a problem for me right now. I can literally move from one thing to the other without worrying about driving down the road, you know?
Right. And, and go on to another call. We were going to have Dan give us a briefing on, on his presentation about policy coherence. I think we clearly can't do that in two minutes, and so what we would do, I propose, is that we would, I think we should take a break here. We, we are scheduled to start at four o'clock sharp with the public hearing. We have at least two witnesses online to, to speak to us. And unless there's other business, I would suggest that we recess for now, for now, which is at about 3:27, 3:28, and get back here at five minutes of four. I'd like you all, now let me just talk about that. This is a public hearing. It is not by, Emily, you track me if I get this right, or wrong especially. It is, it is not necessary that we have a quorum to conduct the hearing. It is desirable, but it's not required by statute. Is that correct?
That is correct. So it's my understanding that you will be listening and receiving public comment, you won't be engaging in board discussion and dialogue with the public comment, and so you do not need, and you won't take action for the rest of the meeting? So you do not need a quorum in order to continue to take the public comment?
And use the word dialogue, just to clarify. I presume that it's okay if board members wish to ask for clarifications about what they hear from the witnesses?
Sure.
But no debates, no arguments?
I'll say, I would say a little more about that. There's a legal reason why I would advise that you not engage in dialogue or argue back, not that anyone on this board would do that. You don't want to give the impression that you're taking some public comment more seriously or engaging on a deeper level, and you don't want to be accused of being preferential, essentially.
Sure. Thank you. Board members, do you all onboard with what you've just heard? Any, any other topics that you wish to address before we recess for about 25 minutes? I think you're saying that sounds like a good idea, so let us do that. Please be back at five minutes of four, and, and we hope we'll have all of you here, but if some of you must be absent, then so be it. But as a matter of courtesy to the community who has, who wants to speak to us in a public hearing, we hope to have as many as you as possible. So we'll see you in about 25 minutes. I think we can get started. Maureen, do we have Karen Price standing by and ready to go?
Karen, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Ms. Price, we welcome you to this hearing. There are several board members present for this discussion, as well as two representatives of the Agency of Education, both of whom were very, very much involved in the drafting of the rules that the board has, the draft rules that the board has adopted. So we are all eager to hear what you have to say. If I may, I would ask that you can find your comments to about 10 minutes, and there may be some questions by way of clarification from board members after your 10 minutes, and perhaps not. Will that be all right with you?
Yep, I'm pretty sure I will not be going over 10 minutes.
Well, that, that's fine, and if you would like, I will give you a warning at either one minute or at two minutes, whichever if or not at all that you prefer.
You can go ahead and do a warning. I'm not actually timed myself, but yeah, probably won't need.
I'm sure you have. I'll, I'll warn you at one minute.
Okay.
Please, we're, we are all yours.
Okay. And I will send you my input through email as well.
Thank you.
So I am providing comment to you from the Vermont Family Network, a statewide nonprofit organization that has been helping Vermont families for more than 30 years. In my role as project director, I am responsible for the state's only federally designated parent training and information center. Our charge is to provide support, information, and training to parents of children with disabilities and the professionals to support them. One of our focus areas is to provide technical assistance in the areas of special education and parental rights and procedural safeguards under IDEA, the federal law that mandates special education. In addition to our technical expertise, we ourselves are parents of children with disabilities. We have daily, almost daily contact with many parents of children with disabilities all over Vermont, and we record about 4,000 contacts with about 1,000 parents each year. I am a parent of a 22-year-old son with an intellectual impairment who was in an IEP through his entire school career. I am also a member of the Special Education Advocates Coalition, which is a group of public and private advocates convened by the Disability Law Project of the Vermont Legal Aid. So first of all, VFN fully supports the Rule 2360 proposal that has been presented to the State Board of Education by the Disability Law Project. And you should already have a copy of that, though I can send it again with my written piece. While Act 173 is an education funding law, our position is that funding changes cannot occur without corresponding changes in practice. The breadth of the Vermont Special Education Rules must be reviewed and adjusted in tandem with funding changes. I would like to speak specifically to a few areas of the proposed changes. The first is parental rights and parental consent. The IDEA is clear that parents of a child with a disability are expected to be equal participants, along with school personnel, in developing, reviewing, and revising the IEP for their child. The reality is that we hear daily from parents who do not feel meaningfully included in the special education process. Parents feel that their input is not considered when decisions are made about their children's IEP, and that there is a basic power imbalance at the IEP table. These proposed changes would help provide parents with a more equal place at the table. So subsection 2361.1.1, Consent of Notice. Currently, there is no specific time period in which a parent must receive prior written notice, when a school proposes to initiate or change, or refuse to initiate or change, a student's identification, evaluation, educational placement, or the provision of a free, appropriate public educational tape. The guidance calls for a reasonable time, but practice has been variable, including times involving decisions when the school is aware that the parent does not agree. The proposed 14-day period provides the parent adequate time to decide whether the change is one with which they will agree, or if not, to pursue dispute resolution options, mediation, administrative complaint, or due process. And in subsection 2365.1.3, Parental Consent, currently, there is no process that a parent sign off in an IEP that they agree fully with, agree partially with, or disagree with. There's a lack of clarity about what parents can do if they disagree with part of the IEP, and how to ensure that the services that they agree with will continue. Often because there is no finality of a signed document, multiple versions of the IEP will exist in which nobody can recall which version is the most current, or the version that everyone has agreed to. The proposed changes will provide parents clear documents that indicate consent, refusal of consent, or partial consent to the IEP, as well as the process to work out a resolution of outstanding issues. Section 2362.2.3, Reevaluation Requirements. This next area is that of the IEP timeline. Currently, there is no time limitation regarding special education reevaluations when the reevaluation is done prior to the three-year reevaluation due date. The proposed change would limit the timeframe for reevaluations to the same timeframe as initial special education evaluations, i.e. 60 days. We have seen families wait for months for the completion of reevaluations, which delays the receipt of any additional or different services that might have been identified as a need. Section 2363.7, Content, Content of the IEP. This would have to do with the transition age. Transition planning is a process mandated by IDEA to facilitate a student's move from school to post-school activities. Currently, the Vermont rules state that a transition plan be in effect in the first IEP in which the student turns 16, which is the student's junior year. We propose that the transition age be 14, as some other states have chosen for their rules. Many students with learning disabilities can benefit from transition planning activities that begin in middle school. This change would also conform with the reauthorization of the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, WIIOA, in 2014, whereby federal funding through vocational rehabilitation is available for students starting at the age of 14. Furthermore, changing the transition age would more closely align with Act 77, where all students in grades seven through 12 are required to have personalized learning plans. Finally, section 2362, Eligibility Ages 6 through 21. This last area is adverse effect. The proposed change would help to bring Vermont into line with the way 49 other states determine eligibility for special education. When IDEA was reauthorized in 2004, it was clear that educational performance is more than academic performance, upon which Vermont's definition of adverse effect is based. Our work with parents shows that the adverse effect criteria in Vermont rules exclude children with functional deficits from being eligible for special education services. The children affected the greatest are those with mental health diagnoses and those diagnosed with high functioning autism. These are children with normal to above-average IQs and who may have few to no learning problems but struggle with understanding social norms, behaving appropriately, and/or communicating with peers or adults. During the eligibility process, information regarding functional deficits are often not documented or considered. This leaves many children with emotional behavioral disabilities and autism spectrum disorders with no access to specialized instruction to meet their unique needs. And that is it. Thanks.
Ms. Price, let me just clarify, and this is for board members as much as anybody, you have been reviewing what you consider essential elements of the proposal of the Disability Law Project, which, as I understand it, has been proposed but not incorporated into the rules as, as they currently exist. Is that correct?
Right. That is a proposal that DLP, Disability Law Project, had presented to the State Board of Education at a prior meeting. So yes, it isn't a part of all of that which you already have, but I'm just highlighting these specific areas, which are included in that, yes.
Yeah, it's very helpful, to me at least, as a layperson. You put, you've sort of put a face on each of these elements. Board members, these are, these are, this is the proposal that you would recognize as coming from Marilyn Mahusky on behalf of the Disability Law Project. And, and while we did not take it up with any particularity at all in our board meetings, we did say at that time that it would, that now, the public comment period is the appropriate time to be bringing that forward. So, Ms. Price, we thank you very much. It was very helpful and very, very instructive.
You're welcome.
Board members, are there any, do any of you have a request or question for further clarification from Ms. Price? We have to wait a long time here, because sometimes we forget to unmute ourselves. We're still getting used to this. Thank you very much, Ms. Price. That was very helpful.
You're welcome. And again, I will send it to you in writing, so you will have it.
Please, that would be just terrific. Great. Thank you. Maureen, next, do we have Mr. Eller?
Mr. Eller, are you on the phone?
Seems to be. Mr. Eller, you need to unmute yourself.
I'm showing him there as muted, so.
Can you hear me? Oh.
There he is. Mr. Eller?
Yes, thank you.
Can you hear us?
I can hear you fine.
Thank you. Mr. Eller, we welcome you here to this hearing. Online at the same time are several members of the board, most of the members of the board, from what I can see here. most of the members of the board from what I can see here, plus some other members of the public, and quite importantly, two members of the Agency of Education legal staff who were instrumental in drafting the rules that have been proposed by the board. We would propose to hear from you for 10 minutes, sir. Well, that seemed to be sufficient time for you?
I believe so. I timed it about seven or eight minutes.
Good for you. It always takes longer. And would you like me to give you a warning at, say, one minute after nine minutes? Or I'll just go to the end?
You can give me a warning if I go over.
All right, good. Thank you, sir. We are all yours. Go right ahead.
Okay. This is in regard to Rule 2360 consideration that you now have. And I speak from two voices. One is the Chair of the Vermont Autism Task Force, the ATF, but also is an educational advocate with 19 years of experience, who is also a member of the Special Education Advocates Coalition, along with Karen Price, which is a group of public and private advocates convened by the Disability Law Project of the Vermont Legal Aid. The ATF fully and strongly supports the Rule 2360 proposal presented by the Disability Law Project. And I'd like to speak specifically to two of these issues. One, the adverse effect change and the requirement that parents sign their consent to proposed IEPs. First, some historical background on the issue of the adverse effect, step two of the special education eligibility process. Vermont is the only state in the U.S. that provides special education services to students based just on academic deficits criteria, but withholds them from many students with developmental, social, functional, and emotional deficits. Vermont is the only state with such an onerous and discriminatory adverse effect eligibility requirement. As other states assume that a professionally diagnosed disability of a student will have a negative educational impact on that student, and that therefore the only question for special education eligibility is whether or not special education services are needed to ensure faith for that student. That's the third step in the Vermont eligibility process. Further, educational advocates have been trying to get the Agency of Education to address the negative impact of the current adverse effect rule since at least 1997, when the IDA law was updated, and then again in 2004, when the IDEA was reauthorized. Under the reauthorization, it was clear that educational performance is more than academic performance. When the Vermont rules, state rules implementing these changes in the IDA were promulgated, advocates asked to address the adverse effect criterion and were promised the opportunity to do so at a later date. But that time never came. The same shuffle happened again in 2009 and 2010, or 2012, when the Vermont rules were again revised. Therefore, major disparity continued between Vermont's eligibility determination process and the federal IDEA intent, as well as the Vermont Frameworks for Standards and Learning Opportunities and the Common Core standards for all students. In other words, Vermont's adverse effect rule is not in compliance with the IDEA. It is a custom cut and paste of the most restrictive specific learning disability requirements of educational disparity and applies it to all other 12 areas of disability covered by the IDEA. And ever since 1997, the reason given for this AOE position was to reduce the cost of special education services by limiting the number of eligible students. But of course, violation of the intent as well as the spirit of the IDEA. Since 2013, the Vermont Autism Task Force has been working in many ways and with several parties to change this adverse effect rule. As many students, especially with high-functioning autism, which is a descriptive, well-known, out-of-jay term, may score well in at least four of the six adverse effect academic categories, but who experience academic challenges needing special education attention because of functional deficits in managing emotions, relating to peers and team situations, and others that impede their ability to succeed in a mainstream classroom without assistance. These difficulties can include, and I quote from a book by Lisa Lukasek, Asperger's Syndrome and Eligibility in the IDEA. She says, "An immature inability to manage motions, unique attention problems requiring redirection, an unusual learning style demanding hands-on attention in the classroom, persistent interrupting and not responding in a manner appropriate in the social context of the classroom, meltdowns during unexpected in-school transitions or in very busy sensory-stimulating environments, and unexplained repetitive whole-body movements disrupted to others in the classroom." These and other functional disabilities impact the academic success, and thus the lifelong vocational and personal success of these students on the autism spectrum, as well as many other students with ADHD and/or emotional disturbance. The Autism Task Force has been involved over the years trying to draw AOE's attention to this problem with no success, which is why we approached the Senate Education Committee in 2015 and the House Education Committee in 2016 to seek legislative action to address this issue. However, various other demands on the legislature intervene to distract these efforts. The present opening of the sped rules is finally a meaningful opportunity for Vermont to address inequities in the AOE adverse effect eligibility criteria. Secondly, second issue addressed by the DLP's proposed Rule 23 changes is one that I, as an educational advocate working in both Vermont and New Hampshire, can speak to with 19 years of experience. In sum, New Hampshire and many other states require that parents to actually sign a consent page in all IEPs that they either agree with the IEP as written, disagree with it, or agree with exceptions. This requirement is a seemingly subtle but powerful one that I can attest to most emphatically in my advocacy work in New Hampshire in contrast with Vermont. It gives the parents an immense sense of empowerment in the IEP process, but one that is not flaunted inappropriately by them, in my experience. It helps define and implement the spirit of IDEA in giving parents a meaningful and important role in the IEP process, thus enabling and encouraging parents to be better and more effective IEP members. This requirement also gives definition and closure to the IEP planning process and ensures greater compliance from schools as well as cooperation from parents. The New Hampshire regulations also spell out the particular process for resolving any differences. Whereas in Vermont, the need for identifying the parent's role in agreement or not with a final version of the student's IEP is only included and only perhaps in the team meeting meetings, and also without any specific requirement or process for parents' disagreements through the due process legal action. This requirement thus meets the legal as well as the spirit of IDEA. It would be a significant game changer in the IEP process for both school staff and parents and lead to an even more healthy relationship between the two. That's my testimony that I have already sent to the email. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Eller, thank you. That was very helpful. Board members, do you have any questions of clarification for Mr. Eller? Hearing none, I would just ask to confirm. So you're saying in the latter question about parental consent and engagement that the process employed by our neighbor in New Hampshire in this connection is a useful model?
I agree, yeah. I found that to be the case. It really does, as I say, define the powers and the appropriate place for the parents in the IEP planning process and creates a sense of balance and equality between the school staff and the parents.
And a similar question. Does New Hampshire have rules with regard to adverse effects that, in your view, are better aligned with the letter and spirit of IDEA?
Yes. They have two requirements. One is that there is a professionally diagnosed disability, which is the same as Vermont's, but they go directly to say, "And the student needs special education services in order to address that disability." They don't even talk about the adverse effect, as does not most other states. Vermont's the only state in the United States that has such an onerous and well-defined adverse effect criteria.
Interesting.
And as I indicated, it's based on the same requirements for specific learning disability. And that's basically an educational disparity model. And they apply it not only to specific learning disabilities, but autism and all the other 13 categories in the IDEA.
Interesting. Very interesting. Board members, any further questions from you? Mr. Eller, this has been very helpful. We thank you very much.
Right, thank you.
And you have sent your comments in writing to, perhaps to me, or...
I sent one copy to you and also to the appropriate SBA file on the AOE.
Okay, very good. Very good. We thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Maureen, is there anybody else who's indicated a wish to speak?
You can pose that question, John. There's a couple numbers on there I don't recognize. I don't know if it's folks who want to speak or that they're just listening.
Okay. We see that there are some members of the public who are listening. And if any of you wish to be heard, please do speak up now.
Hi, this is Greg Van Butten speaking.
Mr. Van... How do you spell your last name, please, sir?
It's V-A-N capital B-U-I-T-E-N.
And may I ask, Mr. Van Butten, what town you are from?
Yes, I'm in Milton, Vermont.
Milton. And would you like to speak to the board?
I would like to speak to the board at the next session after I've been able to write up my comments, if that's okay.
It's certainly all right. We're currently scheduling our next session for the 6th of May.
Okay.
At the same time of day.
Okay.
So if you would be in touch with the folks at the agency, just to let them know of your wish to be scheduled. It's always nice for us to know, to be able to anticipate who would like to be presenting to us. But we'd be very happy to hear from you at the 6th May hearing.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll do that.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else from the public who would like to speak to the board? Remember, you need to unmute yourself. If you're speaking to us by phone, that's normally star six in order for us to hear you. Would anybody from the public like to be speaking at this time? All right then. Board members, we are now in a state of limbo. And I've had a nice conversation with Emily Simmons about this. You may have overheard it. Emily's sense and my sense is that we want to stay on and be available right up until 7 o'clock, as we promised in our public posting that we would be. How we would do... And Maureen will stay on board, as will Emily and I, in order to be available should anybody call in at 6:30 or quarter of 7 and wish to be heard. So I would say that if you're interested and able, you can mute yourself and leave yourself connected to this. And if you have your computer where you might overhear us speaking, your attention will be drawn back to the hearing. But we do certainly understand that you all have many other things to be doing. Certainly Emily and Maureen and I will stand by in hopes of receiving more testimony. And in any case, we will be very conscientious about... The reason Emily and Judy are on this call is to keep track of what we're hearing. So even if you're not here to hear it, you'll see it later on in the summary document that I think the agency folks will be preparing for us. So for those of you who wish to leave, you're welcome to do so. And those of you who wish to stand by, you're equally welcome.
Am I losing audio as well as video at this point in time?
We've gotten your audio, Bill.
Well, you know, if I've got till 7 o'clock, I might get the video figured out.
Well, there's no... I mean, at our age, Bill, I don't think the video is a big asset. But it's great if you would get it figured out so that you're really all on board next time.
Well, you know, that gives me a lot. I should be able to get it by then.
I must say, I loved the testimony we just heard. It was very helpful to me. I frankly had not spent a lot of time studying the Disability Law Project proposal. And I felt that both Mr. Eller and Ms. Price kind of put a face on it, kind of helped me understand the meaning and consequence of the issues that they're talking about.
Yeah, well, that's good.
John, I'll do my best to stay on and listen for anybody else hopping on. I will probably both mute and turn off my video while I do that, but I will plan to be as available as I can. Thanks.
Thank you, Kim. Thank you.
And John...
Go ahead.
This is Emily, Bill. Judy Cutler and I are going to split the time up. She's going to take the first shift, and I'm going to take the second shift. So you board members might take the same approach. I just recommend that as an option to you.
That's a good idea. I noticed Judy was off. So you've got the early morning, early evening shift, and she has the late evening shift.
I think it's the opposite. I think Judy's still on, and she wants me to hop off and come back at 5:30.
It must be time for a mint juleps down where you are.
I'll have to talk to the chef.
Did you know that our legal counsel is speaking to us from southern Mississippi?
She sounded more southern.
Isn't that right?
And she certainly did look like she was glowing a bit.
She's got a little sun, too, I think.
I have.
And they have tomatoes there already?
Well, my tomatoes have bloomed, which I'm very proud of. They're very early bloomers.
A real southerner wouldn't say tomato.
That's okay.
I can translate for you.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I just confirm if we were to either take shifts or stay on for the next hour or so? or so and then be off, will there be...it looks as though it's being recorded, so is that available at our website just to be clicked on to be watched to the future time? Or perhaps those who stay on for the entirety could send the board a message? Maybe, John, you could, to say there was additional testimony at this point in the recording or something? That would be awesome.
Maureen, may I ask you to track that for us?
Sure, it is being recorded. I don't have a whole lot of experience with this. I've already gotten a stream for the first recording, first meeting, which is puzzling because I haven't ended the meeting. But yes, that should be available, and I should be able to get it to you. Maybe it just comes in two parts, so yeah.
Great.
Is it possible that you could call us if somebody showed up? John, are you at home?
I am.
Well, if whoever is staked out there, somebody showed up, we could get back on the phone.
Okay, Bill, what number do you want me to use? Can't guarantee my alacrity with that, but I'll do my best.
We trust you. We're depending on you.
As Kim said, you'll be able to see the video at your convenience.
Yeah, okay.
Although the video may only be audio, in case it's just a call-in, but still, you'll be able to hear the content, for sure.
Well, that's good.
Yeah, but I'll do my best to call you.
Okay. I'm off.
This is Jenna, and I'm fine. Just leave it on mute and my video off, and I'm here. I have lots of other work to do, so I'm good to just hang out and listen.
This is Kathy. I'll be doing the same thing.
Wonderful, wonderful. Kyle, you're still there? Good for you. Thank you.
Yep, of course.
Thank you, Kyle.
Yeah, no problem.
Sabina here. I'll be doing the same.
Oh, good, Sabina. Thank you. Thank you. All right then. Board members and agency personnel, I think we have somebody who's called in and would like to present to us. Maureen is right now calling Bill.
Yep, I'm on.
Good, Bill.
I think we have Katie Ballard wants to speak.
All right, very good. Ms. Ballard, we are ready to hear you. Ms. Ballard, you want to be sure to unmute your phone.
Let's give her a minute, John, because she was in the meeting when I called you, and now I don't see her there.
I thought the meeting went okay, John, for the new technology.
I thought so, too. Yeah, I thought everybody...everybody's a lot more sophisticated at this than you and I are, Bill.
Yeah, I'm just spending two or three hours pushing buttons randomly. And you know, if it doesn't work the first time, I try the same thing the second time.
Yeah, that makes a big difference. I think that's the definition of insanity.
So Katie was on and unmuted herself, but said we still couldn't hear her, so she's getting out and rejoining. I don't see her back on there yet.
All right, let's stand by.
Hello?
Yes, hello. Is this Ms. Ballard?
This is. Sorry, my phone is giving me a bit of a hard time.
Not at all. We're happy to have you on board. We have several board members who are present and listening, as well as agents, staff from the Agency of Education, who were very active in drafting the proposed rules. So we would be very happy to hear from you, Ms. Ballard. Would 10 minutes suffice for you?
I will not need that long tonight. I actually am working on the comment. I'm not prepared, but felt the need to speak tonight.
Great, we are all yours. Go ahead.
Thank you. And again, I truly appreciate your time and energy on this topic during the crisis. I imagine all of your lives are chaotic as well. I do want to say, I'm a parent of three kids, two of whom are in special education. I recently am working towards becoming a member on the State Special Ed Advisory Council. And I'm also a member of Decoding Dyslexia here in Vermont. And as a member of Decoding Dyslexia, I really felt compelled to speak for our group tonight and again reiterate that we really would request that your group consider extending the public comment, given the level of stress on a lot of members of the public, especially parents. It has been very hard to give the appropriate time and dedication to a public comment. And also, I've heard from some parents that I support as an advocate, it's been really challenging to navigate trying to call in or participate remotely for their own reasons of their challenges or disability or lack of Wi-Fi. So I look forward to giving my public comment in May, but I really would ask that the board consider that there are a lot of members of the public who have a whole lot of things that need to be priority and shouldn't have to give up being able to make a public comment on this as well. Thank you.
Ms. Ballard, can I just respond to that by saying that the board has asked the General Assembly to allow us to extend the public comment period until the 31st of December of this year?
Thank you so much. I know our groups have also reached out, so we will continue to let them know how we're all feeling. Thank you so much for sharing that.
Sure. What other comments you'd like to share with us?
That is it for tonight.
I was just asking if there was anything specific you wanted to share, just off the top of your head.
I would absolutely agree with the gentleman who spoke a little bit ago about adverse effect. Vermont is the only state that has it. I'm actually taking a national class to become a better-trained special ed parent advocate through the Council of Parent Advocates and Attorneys, COPA. And it has been really hard to hear how other states don't have that requirement and to feel like it is asking for our children to fail. And for all of the reasons that gentleman stated, I would encourage the adverse effect rule to be removed.
Okay.
And are there any other things you'd like to say before you prepare your more formal statement?
At the time, no. I appreciate the opportunity, and of course, as several of you who may have interacted before know, I have lots of opinions, but I will work on getting those more thought out and prepared.
One thing before you leave us, tell me, if you will, what town you're from, Ms. Ballard?
I live in Essex.
Essex, good, thank you. Well, then, we expect to be having... As you perhaps know, we expect to have a second hearing on the 6th of May, again at the same time, 4 o'clock to 7 o'clock in the afternoon, and a third hearing on the 20th of May. But one way or another, with or without the legislature's consent and assistance, we do intend to extend the public comment period for another seven months. And just as you say, we know that the parents of special needs youngsters have their hands very full these days, and it's our hope that school will resume and do this before the end of the year, and the parents will be comfortable there at 5:00 to the end of December. Is there anything else you wish to say?
No, not tonight. Just really appreciate all of your work and voices being at the table.
We'll look forward to hearing from you again.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Thank you, board members. You can go back to whatever it is you are doing, and we will try to get your attention should there be a need.
Okay.
And if there is nothing, if you don't hear anything from us by 7 o'clock, you can assume that you didn't miss a thing, and we'll talk to you soon.
Okay, take care, John.
Hello, Maureen, it's John Carroll. 6:33.
Hi, John.
Hi. Any word from anybody?
No, I've been checking my email. No, I don't have anyone new coming up.
Okay. Somebody named Christine Kilpatrick was on. They were just an interested party, I guess.
Yes, she had asked for the link. She just wanted to listen in. I don't know if she's still there or not. I don't see her.
Yeah, okay. All right, we'll just stand by. I appreciate you and Suzanne and everybody else hanging in there on this. I think we're doing the right thing.
Yes, absolutely.
But thank you, Kathy. I see you. Kyle's still there?
Yep.
Thank you, Kyle. It's great to have you on board.
I'm still here, too. Peter's still here.
Hey, Peter. Yeah, it's been an interesting day.
Does anybody know any good coronavirus jokes they want to tell?
The joke's on you, yes.
I have a feeling you might have one, Emily.
I do, I do. Where did I...I saw this on Facebook. Okay. A man was concerned about his wife exhibiting symptoms of COVID-19, so he very promptly drove her to the clinic to get the test. And it didn't take very long. Their physician called them back and said, "Well, I have bad news. We've mixed up your spouse's test results with someone who has tested for Alzheimer's, and it's all totally unclear to us whether she has the coronavirus. We can't tell you anything. We just advise that you wait and see if she develops any more symptoms." And the man said, "So she might have Alzheimer's or she might have coronavirus. What do I do?" And the doctor said, "Well, why don't you take her for a long, long walk and leave her at the end of the trail? And if she finds her way back to your house, don't let her in."
That's a little morbid, but yeah, I guess it will work, yeah. So are we done for the day, or are we still hanging on?
We're still hanging on, but if it's dinnertime for you, you should feel free to check out.
Yeah, we're just about ready to eat, yeah.
Yeah, there's a goodly number of board members still on, and certainly the agency staff, Maureen, Suzanne, Emily. Emily's on now, and Judy is off. So we're well represented, and I think we can all feel like we've done right to the public in how we've done this.
Absolutely.
Thank you. You've been trooper. Thank you all.
Thank you, Peter. It's great to talk to you.
Likewise.
Hi, Peter, stay well.
Thank you, John, for your leadership. This has been really a decent experience considering. Thank you.
All right, well, we'll hang in there for another 23 minutes, and we'll be in good shape. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, everybody, it's 7 o'clock, and you've more than done your duty.
Well, thank you, John.
Yeah, thank you very much.
I wish you all well.
Thanks, everyone. Stay well.
Thank you. Goodbye. Thanks, Kyle. Great to see you. Thank you.
Of course.
And Maureen?